Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting on the nineteenth of May twenty twenty-two, City and Nashville Planning Board. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper. Alderman John Cathy. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
Mark Man. And Alderman Ben Clemmons. Alright, so we have a quorum.
Okay, so we have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and move on with our agenda. Next up, for the board members, within your packet, there was a set of minutes from the May fifth, twenty twenty-two Planning Board meeting. Just seeing if anybody had a chance to review those. They wanna make a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept as written or need amendments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fifth, twenty twenty-two Planning Board meeting as written.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Ballinger as written. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Communications?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board. The following communications arrived after your packet was mailed. Sachin Patel, email, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Ludwig Heel, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Aravind Balchristian, that's May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Bahat Rathi, that's May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And those all go under the case A twenty-one oh one seven seven. That's the first case. A twenty-two oh three eight, that is the Flatley Project. We have an updated staff report, updated plan pages. We have waivers. And then we have the following emails from members of the public. David Deacon, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, three oh five. Then we also have Mark Rapaglia, Nashville Fire Department, A twenty-two oh oh three eight as well, and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. We also have Wayne Husband, A two-two oh oh three eight for the fifty-eight Unit One. Then we go back to the members of the public comments. Liz Daly, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Jean Deacon, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Shitra Won, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Joe Gardner, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Kathy Sarah, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Robert Mason, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And then under other business, which, by the way, has been postponed to the June second meeting, we have Joe Mandola, five ninety-three West Hall Street Engineering comments. We have a traffic study provided by Hainer Swanson for that same project. And under, we also have a correspondence on Wednesday, May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, from Wayne Husband for that. And that would be it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any reports of committees? Is anybody here? No? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting. So for those listening in or in attendance here, the procedures of the meeting and hearings are gonna be as follows. After each legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by myself, the board will first determine if the application is complete and if we're ready for the board to take jurisdiction. If we do take jurisdiction, there'll be a public hearing, which will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will begin the time to present an overview and a description of their project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. Next up, I will open testimony to the audience. First, I will ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan to speak. That'll be your time to come forward to the microphone. Make sure you state your name and address for the record, and you can go ahead and express your concerns or ask any questions that you might have of the plan. Following that, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. Then the board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. I'll then give the applicant a rebuttal period, at which time they can speak to any of the concerns raised by the public testimony. After this has been completed, a public hearing will end, and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we will deliberate to vote on the application that's in front of us. I'd ask that everyone keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We wanna be fair to everyone, make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all of our applicable approval criteria established in our national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans, and subdivision plans. I thank everybody for their interest and attention. Ask if you do have a cell phone at this time, and you put on vibrate. Okay, so first up on the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans is case number A twenty-one dash zero one seven seven, Jigna and Sachin Patel owners. This is a proposed subdivision amendment to remove an existing utility easement. Property is located at sixty-nine Cherrywood Drive. This particular business was tabled from a meeting on October seventh, twenty twenty-one. I believe in Mr. Barley, you can correct me if I was wrong, I was not at that meeting, but the case has been, was taken into jurisdiction? Was heard during the hearing?
Correct. Yes, there was, there was a hearing on the case, and after the hearing, the, the matter was tabled for further, to allow for further discussion among the neighbors.
Okay, alright. Okay, so, that being said, for the board, it sounds like we have the applicant here tonight. Is that correct? Okay. So that being the case, I'll put it out to the board as anyone who wanna make a motion to remove this application from the table and essentially reopen the hearing as well.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
May I ask a question of staff?
Absolutely.
Prior to doing so?
Yep.
Does staff feel that, that we've reached a point where it's appropriate to reopen this public hearing? We've, we've tabled this essentially for six or seven months. Are we at a point now where this can be heard appropriately, and all evidence has been submitted satisfactorily, at least from staffing level, to proceed?
The question really isn't whether we have enough information at this time. We have an engineer that's gonna present tonight, Ben Osgood, the letter that's stamped that was in the packet, indicating that this, you know, the drainage swale has no impact. So that's what we have, and it's up to you guys. If, if you feel it's not sufficient, you can vote it down. If you feel it is, then you can vote it up.
Okay.
Thank you. Because I don't think we're gonna get too much more. We've been trying to get plans. We've been trying to get, you know, other items.
I guess, may, may I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
Um, I, I believe there, at some point back last October, it was, when we first heard this, the, the city was considering a possible fine. Or, or, or are there still other proceedings related to building department violations and things of that sort that are still ongoing with this?
Actually, this is going to be the end of this being on the agenda for the Planning Board. You've had it for a year. You've given everybody sufficient amount of time to get it together. If, whatever results tonight, it will go into the enforcement mode after that.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright. Again, anybody wanna make a motion as to when this is ready for us to take jurisdiction or actually reopen and kick off the table? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion as to old business A twenty-one dash zero one seven seven, that we remove that case from the table and reopen the public hearing.
Okay, so we have that motion to remove this item on the agenda from the table and reopen the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? None? Okay, that motion passes, and we'll go ahead and, I will open the, reopen the hearing. So, do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present any more information? Come on up, just make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Sachin Patel. I'm living, we live at the sixty-nine Cherrywood Drive. So we moved into this property two thousand and six, and since then, this is a public drainage easement, which is like, there's no utility or anything, just surface drainage. In the middle of my lot, which is like, half of the lot is unutilized, we just realized that. So we cannot, so we are asking to move that easement in the back towards the location in the back of the lot, where actually the hill, the water gets collected. The, the easement is very close to my home. No, never water got collected. It always happened over there. So by moving to the relocation to this easement, we are actually moving to the proper location, and it's not detrimental to any drainage issue. So that's why I request that in the, my land surveyor and the, Ben Osgood is an engineer. He came, he studied all these things, and gave the letter that this relocation of the drainage.
Ben is here.
Oh, Ben is here?
He can speak.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So relocation of this easement is actually, we are bringing to the proper location, and is not detrimental to any drainage issue. This Ben, okay, in his center even, so Ben, do you have any, do you, would you like to say anything, Ben?
Yes, Ben Osgood, excuse me, Ranger Engineering Group from Salem, New Hampshire. I went out to the site and looked at the, the area, looked at the area on sixty-nine Cherrywood and the two adjacent homes, which would be, I guess, downhill from sixty-nine. And essentially the water is flowing on Mr. Patel's property where he proposes to put this easement. It is not flowing where the easement was designed. You know, I've told him, in my opinion, I don't think the easement should have been put down the middle of the lot. It should have been at the back of the lot, which is usually, you know, where, as engineers, we put them. Obviously, the contractor, when he graded the lot, he pushed the water to the back of the lot, which makes sense. You don't want the water coming down through adjacent to the house. So, I mean, I, in my professional opinion, I don't think moving this easement is detrimental to anybody. I think it, the easement will be where the water is flowing, and it will remain, it, it will serve the purpose that it was meant to serve. I mean, it's gonna convey water from the adjacent property that's uphill across Mr. Patel's property onto the adjacent property within that easement that, you know, extends down towards, I think it's Chokeberry, Chokeberry Lane, I believe, is down below. So, I mean, I mean, that's, in a nutshell, I know there's a, there may be other issues out there, but it is a drainage easement. It catches water, and it stays damp, wet, you know, especially in the spring and fall. I'm sure it dries up in the summertime. So I guess that's, that's essentially my opinion, and that's what I put in my letter.
Okay. Any other comments you wanna make from the, as the applicant?
So like, if you, if somebody's familiar with that area, the whole Maplewood area is on the hill kind of thing. So again, from Hydragea to the Chokeberry, this is like a Hydragea, this is a Chokeberry Lane. So there is a kind of slope, and the, the house on the Hydragea is almost like three-story above the my house kind of thing. So water is going to flow according to their, their slope, and the, so like, all of our, back of the house, my house, my neighbor's house, everybody's house in the back, it always remains wet kind of thing. And, but where the drainage is sown right now, currently, which is very close to my home, that never gets it. So that's why we are asking to, if a town allows us. And that will be great, because it's not like affecting anybody's drainage or kind of thing. Is going water in the same, so we're asking exactly the, put the drainage easement into the, where the water is going.
Alright. Anybody from the board have any questions of the applicant while the hearing opens? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Mr. Osgood. You indicated that, you know, in your opinion, that moving the, the drainage easement here wouldn't have a negative impact on the actual flow of the drainage. I, I'm just wondering, the, I understand that as it exists right now, there's the, the gazebo and some other hardscape features within the current existing drainage easement. In your view, has that impacted the drainage flow, or do you believe that the drainage would have already been flowing in the area that's proposed for the relocated easement?
So, when, when I look at the site, it looks like when they built the home, they graded the property away from the house, and the low spot is where the existing easement is. You know, which, I mean, that's just, that's how they graded the property. And I don't think that the gazebo or patio that are there affect the drainage flow from, I guess it's number seventy-one Cherrywood down to number sixty-seven. I don't think the, the gazebo or the patio have any effect on the flow of the water across the property. It's basically flowing where the proposed easement is, would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions by the board for the applicant? While in the hearing? Alright, hearing none. No questions for staff either? Alright, thanks. At this point, I'd ask anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a question of the plan?
Hello, this is Bharat Rathi, sixty-seven Cherrywood Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I had sent in to the board the list of concerns for, for this meeting. I hope everybody has a chance to read it. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I don't personally. I guess, did anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, if he would like to briefly summarize the point, the salient points in his letter, I, I would certainly allow for that if, if, if he had the time.
That would take, hold on, I'd have to open that up. But one of the, one, one concern and the biggest concern, Mr. Greg Jeffrey, the surveyor who did this survey back in twenty twenty, and then updated it back in twenty twenty-one, has already withdrawn from this case. Okay? He no law, he has suggested that hydologists be used because there is subsurface water movement. There are under drains everywhere. That's used in conjunction with the easement. There is, of course, surface water flow, but there is also subsurface water flow. And I've shown you back in October photos of, what do you call, the under drains. And in the engineering plan that the city had for the subdivision, there are, what do you call, under drains for the road as well, because there is so much water that's flowing below surface. The second thing I'd like to point out is, since Greg Jeffrey has withdrawn, you don't really have a survey anymore to base this on. Okay? It would have been great if Ben Osgood had actually done a survey, had done an engineering plan, and that's what came out of the October seventh meeting. We were all gonna work together to get a drainage solution. We were not going to go back and revisit this easement change. Okay? The agreement was, the understanding was, we would all work together to get a drainage solution, and that most likely would have meant having a drain pipe across the property lines that would possibly connect into the, what do you call, catch basin. Now, the only thing is, in order to connect it to a catch basin, and again, I've been through this with the city for, since twenty twenty. You need, what do you call, you need permission both from the street engineer, Joe Mandola, you need permissions from Public Works. Okay? And it's a very special type of, of permit to be able to do that. Now, I requested, you know, we were supposed to come up with the engineering plan. Ben Osgood went back and forth on this. I, I asked him a lot of questions. He said finally, for nine thousand dollars, plus thirty thousand dollars in possibly implementation, that there could be a solution to this. So when I asked him all the questions about where the easement would go, who would do the maintenance, and so on, and so on, and he had gotten permission, you know, pre-approvals from the city to be able to do this, he never gave any answer to that, and then he withdrew from this, what do you call, case. He says he is withdrawing. Okay? And that was that. I mean, and we'd never heard anything more from that. And the other part of it is, you know, Ben Osgood hasn't done a survey here. Okay, so clearly seventy-one Cherrywood Drive, what do you call, now he just stated where the, where this easement is, is the low point. That's correct. The current easement. That's where the swale is. Now, the problem is, if you move it back uphill, the swale is not there. Okay? And seventy, since, now, he's clearly stated in his letter that seventy-one Cherrywood, the water is coming from seventy-one Cherrywood Drive. And that's correct. There is a swale on seventy-one Cherrywood Drive where the water flows through. Okay? So that makes seventy-one Cherrywood Drive a part of this easement, and they get a say in terms of where, where you move the start of the easement. Okay? So now, if you move that easement back up where the swale isn't, you've got to move the swale back. And we've talked about this with Ben Osgood. He said you have to make the hills steeper in order to do that. Okay? So there's nothing in this letter that says we're making, we're moving that swale back. Now, we had this discussion back in November, that in order to move the swale back, you have to make the hills steeper. But there's nothing in this letter about making hills steeper. And there's nothing in this letter about getting permission from seventy-one Cherrywood Drive to make any changes. I might have missed a few points. I mean, there was a lot back in my October letter as well. But if there are any questions, anybody has about that, I'll be glad to answer those.
Okay, thanks. Anybody on the board have any further questions for the commenter?
No.
Alright, thank you very much. Is anybody else in the audience, and that, that obviously includes anybody on Zoom, wishing to speak in opposition or concerns to the plan? Okay, hearing none. I will say, is anybody wishing to speak in favor? At this point, I would ask for the board. Is there anybody in the board that has any further questions for either the applicant, the engineer, or just the one person from the public that we can hear during this hearing part? Mr. Barley?
I just have one additional question from Mr. Osgood. Given one of the issues that Mr. Mr. Rathi raised, are there any, within the existing drainage easement, are there any drainage structures, like subsurface drainage structures? He referred to pipes or, or something else. Is there any other structures that, that could be potentially impacted if there were construction in the old drainage easement?
I don't know if there's anything in the old drainage easement on Mr. Patel's property. I don't believe so. Mr. Patel has a sub-drain at the back of his property to intercept water coming off of the hill that he collects in a little sump, and he pumps it out towards the front of the property to get rid of it. You know, and I, what I'd like to say is there's, there's two different issues here. This, this drainage easement is for surface water. There is a groundwater bleed-out problem there. This is a drumlin. It has a, it's a till soil. The lots were developed, and they cut into the existing soil. So they have a lot of weeping of groundwater coming out in the back of the yards. Now, Mr. Rathi mentioned, I said you'd have to move this, you had to cut the hill back and make it steeper to change the swale. And, and what I was saying when I, when I said that, what I was alluding to was, you know, we design these kinds of things all the time. I, I think it is not a good design to put a drainage easement through the middle of somebody's backyard. What I would have done was moved the swale back to the back property line, and that would have been the low point on the lot, and then it would have sloped up behind on the open space land. And there's a big hill there. I mean, it goes up twenty or thirty feet. I mean, it goes up 20 or 30 feet on the, there's a piece of open space land there behind these properties. But if I had designed this subdivision, I would have had a surface water drainage easement going along the back property line, not through the middle of the property. But where Mr. Patel wants to relocate the easement, that is where the water is going, the surface water is going. Now, there's a whole other problem of just bleed-out. And it bleeds out and runs down this easement. To dry up your yard and prevent the bleed-out, you'd have to put in a subsurface drain, you know, some sort of four, five feet deep stone exposed at the top to capture any of the bleed-out that's coming down the hill. So it's a, that is a separate issue from just the surface water that is coming down this drainage easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, for the board, anybody else have any questions of the applicant or staff? All right, in the closing here? Okay? All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing now. All right. So, so we're in the meeting now. So several of you have heard all of the parts of the case here. And, you know, we basically have a couple of different opinions from some folks that are in the butters. That's atypical, these kind of issues that we see. So, anybody have any comments? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, so I mean, having, you know, heard the case originally back, you know, in October, and having read all the materials then, and, you know, the updated materials now, and having heard from Mr. Osgood, I mean, you know, my assessment of what's going on here is that there is a, you know, overarching drainage issue. But it doesn't seem to have anything to do with the location of this drainage easement. And, you know, the testimony we heard from Mr. Osgood in particular is that where the surface water is actually flowing is where Mr. Patel would propose to relocate the easement. And it does seem, you know, not being an engineer myself, it does seem like, like an odd location for a drainage easement right in the middle of somebody's backyard like that. So, you know, it seems to me reasonable to propose to relocate this drainage easement. Now, I appreciate that there's still, you know, residual drainage issues that, you know, the neighbors have not been able to come to agreement on in terms of a resolution, but it doesn't seem to me that, you know, that Mr. Patel should be prohibited from making this change if it's not, you know, having any substantive impact on the drainage.
Mr. Hirsch?
If it's relocated, will it be a continuous swale? Or will it be, you know, vary depending on the yards involved? Do you follow in saying we'll go through the various yards, we'll be relocating everyone's or just that one?
I think staff could comment on that if they don't have.
It would be relocated on Mr. Patel's property.
What about the question of underground piping? It might be there's some kind of underground system. Is there any truth, anything, any evidence to that effect?
I'm not aware.
The easement on the plan, Scott, is specific to surface?
Yeah, it's specific to surface. It doesn't show any.
I'm not sure that, if you had a surface easement, Dan could probably comment, it wouldn't do anything for you for underground, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciated Mr. Osgood's testimony, and I believe I, from what I've seen, I kind of came to the same conclusion. I also wouldn't have designed it the way it was designed. You would have a swale on the back, would have been preferable to cut through all the properties. Then you could have, could have had a very well-defined drainage easement that covered that swale, but that's not how it was designed. It's, there's not, you know, any kind of a deep swale type feature there. So there is a distinction between the surface runoff and the, any underground issues. And, you know, unfortunately, I think, I think my hope, I don't know, maybe the boards too, was that the neighbors could get together and come up with some swale type of solution, which maybe would address some of the wet yard issues and, you know, solve this easement issue as well, but that hasn't come to pass. So I guess I'm, I'm coming at the same conclusion that relocating this easement doesn't fundamentally change any of the surface runoff condition, makes, makes it more consistent with what the current condition is. So I would, I'm going to support this easement approval, but that, that whole finding is separate from any issues with any violations or any underground anything, or issues between neighbors with drainage, or, you know, that, that, all those things are kind of separate issues from relocating this easement in my mind. I found the testimony quite compelling, and I agree with Mr. Osgood.
Anybody else have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess overall, I have issues with the timing of this in the sense that the easement was already violated, and then there's an application to relocate the easement. Even if the engineering testimony was compelling, it, it seems like we're still potentially being put in a situation of we're righting a wrong. And I, I have issues with that potentially, where we're trying to sort of potentially adjudicate another matter through the planning board process that didn't really have planning board jurisdiction initially. Obviously, we can't go back in time, but it would have seen that the, the proper course of action would have been to investigate the relocation of the easement prior to the construction of any other structures or hardscape on the property that violated the easement. This is where I'm, I'm just having an issue, Mr. Chair. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I, just to that point, I mean, I don't think we see it all that often on the planning board, but I suspect at the zoning board, it's something you see quite frequently, right? Which is somebody, you know, builds something within the setback, doesn't realize they're within the setback, is then advised that they have to go get a variance because of that. And, you know, they then go apply for the variance after having, you know, committed the violation. So I agree, it's not something that we're used to seeing the planning board, but I, you know, I think I take Mr. Patel at his word that, you know, that they didn't construct the gazebo there with the intent to violate the easement, but rather whoever was doing that construction maybe didn't do their diligence, didn't realize, you know, that there was an easement there. So, I mean, I, I, I 100% agree with you that people should, you know, obviously be proactive and, and ask for the relief they need before it's needed rather than after. But I think as, you know, as a practical matter, I think it's appropriate for us to try to seek to resolve this after the fact.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I, too, am not, don't want to reward doing things, you know, inconsistent with approved plans, but in my mind, this change doesn't impact, negatively impact, or, I mean, it doesn't create a situation that can be mitigated, I guess is what I'm saying. By, by, whatever's been done on the property, the grading is such that it drains behind and around that gazebo through this proposed easement area, and now they're proposing to move the easement to be consistent with that. So, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's unfortunate that it came to be in the order it came to be, but, but had this come, had this come in before gazebo was placed and the proposal was moved to the back, I don't think I would have come to a different conclusion. I think the location provides the drainage passage that was the original ten of the original easement. But it's unfortunate that it came, you know, in the reverse order we would have liked to have seen it.
Yeah, I guess my, I'll add my comment is, the purpose of the easement is to keep from having structures built where the surface water drainage is. If we don't move the easement, they could just put the gazebo in where the water is. And that seems kind of dumb. You know, I think the whole purpose of the easement is to keep the area where the water is flowing free. Regardless of where any of the structures are now, I think we don't want structures in the path of the current water flow. And I'm understanding from the engineer and others that that's at the, at the location of the proposed easement. So I'm kind of looking at this as a, as a practical matter, like, what's the best for the, for the property, regardless of what's on it now and where? It seems like we want the easement where the water is flowing, because we don't want future construction there. So to me, you know, I mean, that might be blinding what was ahead of it, but it seems reasonable in my mind that, you know, it doesn't make sense to put a second easement on, on the lot, right? Let's just put it where it should be. So, that's my thought. Anybody else? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All your points greatly, greatly appreciated. The only other thing I would offer is, the applicant is also, also asking for a waiver for a drainage study, and I guess maybe with, without that, I don't necessarily know that this will function as intended or replace what, what was there. And I, and I appreciate that there's some anecdotal evidence by looking at the grades. I guess if you combine the lack of drainage study with the fact that, to use Mr. Hudson's words, we're kind of handling this out of order, just in terms of how we would like to see it, I would still have reservations. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hudson?
To, to Mr. Ballinger's point, I mean, I, not, not in the record here, but I would, I would like to see topography, and it probably is not appropriate to be on the, actually on the plan that's recorded, because typically you want to keep the easement plans fairly clean without a bunch of detail like that. But I don't know, is we should relieve the applicant from the responsibility to provide some kind of a topographic plan that shows the, you know, flow line basically, just so that we can confirm it's in the easement area. So maybe a condition that, you know, may that request that topographic plan be submitted and approved, you know, to, to administrative, administration's, you know, satisfaction would be, would be beneficial.
Okay. Would, just for staff, essentially, it's, it's a waiver of 19282B25 that's allowing that not to happen, right?
Right.
So if that waiver is not approved?
Yeah.
That requirement is, exists, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeking a drainage study per se, you know, a document, because it's, it's whatever, whatever water's passing from one side to the other, you know, we just need, this easement is to provide a drainage way. I'm most interested in the point you raised previously, which is that we don't want structures placed in the flow line, and I want to make sure that this easement is encompassing the flow line. And if it isn't, then that flow line should be regraded to be within the easement, would be my thought, so.
Okay.
I think we should be given some assurance that the easement is in the right location as was stated, you know, is by the engineer.
I'm thinking maybe we can, we can, you know, in theory, if we were to move forward and otherwise prove, we could grant the waiver for the drainage study, but then say it's subject to separate condition.
I'd like to see a topographic plan, yeah. A topographic detailed plan.
Yeah.
Demonstrating the flow line falls within the easement area.
All right. All right. Any other comments by the board in the meeting here? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Varley?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve all business project A 21-0177 subdivision plan. And that would be a motion to approve finding that the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section 190, 190-138G have been met with a total of 12 stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request from 190-282B9 that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two is a waiver request from 190-282A, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three is a waiver request from section 190-283, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four is a waiver request from section 190-282B25, which will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, but further subject to stipulation number 12, that waiver being subject to stipulation number 12. Stipulations five through, through 11, reading as written in the staff report. And then stipulation number 12 will read that prior to the chair signing the plan, the applicant shall submit a topographic plan to staff for review and approval that will demonstrate that, that the flow line of the drainage runs through the proposed easement.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley with the 12 stipulations as stated. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, so we have four to one, so that motion passes. Okay. Next up on the agenda, all business site plans, there are none. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans, this case A 22-0064, Cullen Brook Investment Owner, application and acceptance of proposed lot line relocation. This property is located at 5 and 7 Westbrook Drive. So for folks on the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan, case A 22-0064.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A 22-0064. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes. We have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this case?
Yes, Sam Ingram from Meridian Land Services.
Okay, we can hear you. All right. Give your address.
Very good. Good evening.
The address of.
Good evening, this is.
Go ahead, you're just delayed a little bit.
Oh, okay. So I'm here to present the application for the lot line adjustments of lots A 30, 355 and A 356. These are two previously existing lots that we're looking to relocate the lot line. There's an existing house on lot 356. 355 is currently vacant. We are looking to relocate the line for the purpose of making it in the more realistic and reasonable location. I'm assuming everybody can still hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep.
Okay. So the existing area of lot 355 is approximately 18,364 square feet. The existing area of 356 is 18,248 square feet. We're looking to provide that to the proposed areas of 355 being 11,000 square feet and some change, and 356 being 24,980 square feet. So we're looking to increase the size of the existing lot A-356 and slightly decrease A-355. Both maintain the, the required frontage and the required area, and we're looking to simply, you know, revise the location of that lot. simply, you know, revise the, the location of that lot. It's, we're, we're, I guess if there's any questions at this time, I'd be more than happy to discuss, but it's, it's a pretty simple lot line location.
Okay, thanks. We have a couple of questions that came in from some, I guess, butters here. I don't know if you can speak to them.
Yep.
Particularly, I guess, the one that I would want you to speak to was whether or not the, the roadway has any moratorium on it? Is there any, you know, does that impact the usability of the proposed new lot, or I should say reduced lot?
So at this time, I, I believe there is. The answer to your question, yes, I believe there is. We are, I would like to limit the, the, the purpose of this application to the simple relocation of the lot line. However, if and when that time comes that the construction would happen within the roadway, the applicant would take the necessary steps to get that approval.
Okay. Yeah, and we can summarize, I mean, we have the city engineer here, he can summarize that for us. Do you understand there being any need for any zoning relief for this proposed lot line adjustment?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for the board, for the applicant? Mr. Riley?
Yeah, and this is, I think, looking at the, the same list of questions that the chairman was looking at. There was reference to, one of the neighbors referred to a, a path that exists on the parcel now that allows students to cross through the lot to get to Sunset Heights. I don't see anything on the plan, nor could I see anything on the ground that specifically indicates a path. I'm not sure whether that's just a, you know, kids walking through the woods on a dirt path, but can you just speak to that? Is there, is there sort of a designated path now? And if yes, would that be preserved as part of this?
Certainly. So actually, at the time that we did our survey, there was a, a small amount of snow on the ground. There was, there was no evidence of, of the path at the time. And from what I understand, speaking with the applicant, there, there is some level of a path that, that, that some, some people use. It's, it's essentially along the property line, that, the, the existing property line of the most northerly side. So even if there, even if that path does exist and is used, no construction of, of a house if, or when that happens would prohibit that path to be obstructed. I also don't want to ignore the fact that that path is on private property, there's no public right to use that path, there's no public designation or easement to use that path.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant by members of the board? Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, I'd ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Go ahead and come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record and go ahead and.
My name is Thomas Royal. I live at, at 3 Westbrook Drive, which is the property to the right there on, on the street. My wife Lori is here. So I guess, and my wife and I have really four main concerns. And I would say the biggest concern is, is, is water runoff. And you're the planning board, so you worry about that. And I guess based on the previous testimony, now is the time to address it. So we're very concerned about the water runoff to our property from the proposed building site. There's no proposed grading plan. And you can see in the, in the second drawing that they supplied, and, and it's, it's hard to tell from that if that's the proposed plan or the existing, but basically the, the contour map show the flow of water going into our property. And, you know, we've already had a couple instances where water has gone into our basement due to the flow. Essentially, the, the Sunset Heights is higher, it's like 25 feet higher than our house. The adjacent property there is about 10 feet higher than our house. And if they make any changes there, like changing the trees, the, the, the actual path that goes through there, the size of that path are actually quite steep to their property, like 35 degrees probably at, at some points. And, you know, putting a lot in there is, is going to be, I'm sorry, putting a building there, it's going to be impervious, the water's going to run off, there's going to be surface flow onto our property. So that's the first point. And I guess our main concern is about the waiver. Basically, no one is looking at what does happen to the water, that, that, that this thing will produce, and they're asking for a waiver to not address that, those issues. And, you know, all the natural elements like trees, there are a lot of trees along that trail, they, they haven't really addressed that, they just said they would keep three trees at the middle of the, of the existing property, or, sorry, four trees. And, let's see here. And, and, and those trees are important to keep the hillside there and, and not erode into our property, as well as, you know, keep the drainage better than it is now. I, I mean, better than it would be if they built a driveway all the way along there. And I would say besides us, properties across the street have, have downward facing driveways that when, if the water crosses the street, they're in a lot of trouble. And I guess the trail actually is, kind of serves as a conduit for the water to go between our properties, out to the, close to the street. And, and if any changes to that happen, it's going to flow onto our property, so it's a matter of almost inches. And the trail, it is kind of used as a public access for the neighborhood, not only children, but joggers and everything else that go up to the park and the school. And it's kind of important really to everybody. And I guess the fourth point is that the, you know, the map, and I guess the, you know, the second map shows a lot there, but, you know, there are a few errors in, in, in the map. I think in, in that particular one, it actually shows an overhead line going across the street, there is no overhead line there. So then putting a pole and another overhead line, you know, is an additional hazard. And I guess on the map, it also says that the lot width is 20 and the setback is 90 feet, but I think that's clearly not the case. So, you know, we would urge the board to at least require them to, you know, provide the information necessary to make a good judgment on the effect of a butters. And, you know, I think the regulation for zoning is typically 1,000 feet, but that's probably a little too much in this case, but a couple of hundred feet would be just fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something.
You have to come up to the microphone and just state your name and address.
Lori Royal, we live at 3 Westbrook Drive, and it's A 354. A couple of things that my husband did say. We believe this waiver should not be waived, in part because of the natural characteristics of the land that has been established. The Sunset Park meets these properties in the back, on the downhill side. The Sunset Elementary is like at 170 on the topography map. Sunset Park's like at 160. When you hit our property, which is to the right, looking at this map, to the right, we're at 140. The back of 355 is at like 150 and 160. It is such a steep hill that behind 1, 356, they have built a retaining wall. And so the property just looking at 355, that is 14 feet above our property. Any, they have put, we feel that more of a contour map should be done in this case. It is not just a simple line change in this, the way they're doing this. They are actually giving 6,700 square feet from 355 to 356. At which point, the setbacks on 356 side, the setback on 355 is 10, and then it's from the new line, it'll be 15 on the, on to 356. So they're increasing the side there. This isn't simple setbacks when you begin to take into place topography, what they're clearing, this is, I mean, simple lot lines, excuse me, when you start taking into play everything that's going on. We bought the house almost six years ago, and one of the first things that was asked of us was not to change the trail that exists. Now, at Sunset, it is very wide, it has always been there. It comes all the way down to a narrow path. Our property, where we put a monument in a couple of years ago, because there was nothing that we knew of surveyed, our monument was put in the middle of that path, right before it drops off the hill, right around that 150 mark, if you look at the topography of the land. And we were asked not to enclose it, because we were going to enclose it, because we had two dogs. And when the neighbors came to us and said, please don't do that, that has been in existence for the children to go to the basketball, tennis court, baseball fields, the elementary school, and various other uses. And every day, we see people pass by walking dogs early in the morning, and we've allowed it, we've left it open because it is mostly open access to up there. So we've left it open, it's ver, especially during COVID. It's been, I'm sure, a healthy way, when you're locked at home, to get out. It's a safe neighborhood, the kids can cut right up that hill. And I've been watching the turnover in the neighborhood with people selling, and there are younger kids coming into the neighborhood. But it is very well used, and I don't think that waiver should be just arbitrarily tossed out with everything that is within that property on our side. I know my husband spoke to the slope downhill, it goes right down to 100 feet by the map at the bottom. But that, that flood plain comes in right around 120, 130, which is Eastbrook. So there are some serious issues that that waiver should not be allowed to just be tossed. I don't know if I've forgotten anything.
No, I think you just.
It's the wet, it's the water. I mean, it's a steep, like he said, 35, 40 degree, and then it comes this way at our property from theirs. The, the way it, the, the trail has created a natural runoff. The neighbor that just left actually built up on his side where the trees are that we don't want removed, which, all of that, I, I think there's a lot of things in there that go to other zoning ordinances. Yeah, I can't think of anything else. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern, have a question to the plan, come on up? Reminder to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Roger Lockhead. I live at 4 Westbrook Drive, across the street from Mr. and Mrs. Royal. Now, the story they tell, or what they're talking about is very, very much true, because I lived at 3 Westbrook Drive for 32 years. I then moved across the street to 4 Westbrook Drive. Now, what happens on that property? When we get a heavy rain, particularly in the wintertime, when the ground's frozen, that path turns into a brook. We have about an eighth of a mile of a hill on Westbrook Drive, and down on my end, we have two sewers to take care of it. I found myself out there many times in the middle of the night with a, with a golf umbrella and a rake, taking leaves out of the sewers, so they wouldn't come down my walkway, and it all still goes down my driveway on the other side. So there is a, there is a drainage problem there with, it's too much volume for the lack of sewers. And I'd like to adjust another thing, too, that, that park starts early in the morning with dog walkers, people walking, kids going to school, and it's been that way since the late 60s, when those houses were built. So in the, the property boundary for, I can't see the numbers, but for that, for that second lot right now that they're proposing, is directly, the metal pole with the orange stake in it is directly in the middle of the path.
Okay.
Okay, that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
May I follow up?
Is it new information, or is it more of the?
Um, yes, it is new information.
All right, quickly, because we obviously have a lot of people out here waiting to talk about other things, so.
Where they have the existing manhole covers and.
Make sure you state your name and address.
Sorry. Lori Royal, 3 Westbrook Drive. Where they have the existing on the map, the existing storm inlets and, and manhole covers and the sewer line, what is not on that map that I just learned tonight was a previous resident of 4, was right at the end of our driveway, there is a grate. And when the storm runs, it starts just after 356's lot line, it starts heading towards us, it's just after the beginning of that, it's right about that lot line. The storm runoff that is created, if it's just rain, it's two and a half feet wide, it floods our mailbox, it floods our driveway, and it goes into that grate that is directly across from the one that's on the opposite side of the road at 4 and 2 Westbrook. And that isn't even on the map, and there was a good reason for that. And that's what Mr. Lockhead has been saying, he goes over there and cleans it out, because it is such a low spot that it collects everything. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan?
Yes, this is Erin O'Malley, 8 Westbrook Drive.
Okay.
And I, I second everything that I've heard. I do believe this is in a, a pretty simple lot line adjustment to reduce the lot, has, there's a lot in play. The front yardage setback is a concern to us, if, you know, if you go through this neighborhood, all the homes are pretty much in parallel to one another as you go up the street, to have a home slammed in, sticking out is a concern for me in an established neighborhood that's been around since the 60s, and one of the reasons we moved into this area. The other thing is the existing overhead electrical service to be replaced by a contemplated underground service to both lots. Yeah, I, I did want to understand the, the other overhead electrical that most of the neighborhood is serviced on. It does indicate a install of a utility pole coordinated with appropriate electrical utility. Again, a concern, what will that look like? If you come in to the Farmington Acres today, where the, you know, big, big metal poles are that connect to the grid, you know, that, when those went up, that was a bit of a concern, they are a terrible eyesore. So want to understand that, because that will be a direct line to us in, in front of our home. I know there were a couple of other things noted about the waivers, I don't know a lot about that, but I did note, a lot will be served by existing municipal water supply and sewer, so again, what impact does that have on us in this? So again, what impact does that have on us in, um, this neighborhood? And no underground utility investigation was performed by this office at notes. So again, what impact does that have on the neighborhood? So I do see there's an existing fire hydrant out there. Doesn't look like that is to be touched. But we do have concerns about, um, the impact to this neighborhood of, as I would call it, slamming in a home between, um, you know, of, of, an establishment that's been around since the sixties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Okay, hearing none, I will go, is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Okay. Uh, at this point, I will, um, give the applicant a, an opportunity to, um, provide rebuttal to any of the public testimony. I would remind you that most of the testimony was based around drainage, um, the path along the border of the proposed, um, new lot. And, um, I guess you could speak to underground utilities as well.
Sure. So, I guess it won't necessarily be rebuttal, it'll just be explanation. So, the, we in no means are, are trying to get away with doing anything that's would cause negative impacts on surrounding properties. The point of certain waivers or, or really the intention of this application is to discuss the relocation of the lot line. I had added a note to the plan, to this lot line adjustment plan that indicates that a lot development plan will be provided to the building inspector, to the city of Nashua, prior to the issuance of a building permit to ensure that we're, uh, being consistent with the development regulations that the city has. So that, that's simply just a, a difference, a difference, a different, um, issue than the application for the lot line, lot line location. Another, uh, one of the other issues that was discussed was the path. Uh, again, I'm not, we're, we're simply not saying that we're going to obstruct that path or close that path or build within that path. Uh, as far as it stands right now, that path will remain open, but I also wanted to make it clear that that path is worked on, is within private property, and those private property owners have the right to, to that, to that ownership. Uh, the other item that was discussed was the underground utilities. Uh, it's a typical note for us to put on the plan when we're doing a survey of this nature that no, no underground utility was, investigation was done at this time. It's very typical that that investigation is done come the time of construction, and we would then contact Digsafe and any other utility companies to provide information that might be, um, you know, should provide us with information regarding the, the utility lines within the roadway or possibly within the lot. But then, then again, that's done at the time that we're proposing features to be constructed on the property, which at this time we're not.
Okay. Um, so this time I'll open up to the board. Uh, any questions of the applicant during the hearing here? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, this is for, um, for the applicant and for the engineer. I understand that this plan i- is a lot line relocation plan, but it is specifically in contemplation of the construction of a new house on the newly created lot. So I think it's, it's reasonable for us to expect, um, to be, for you to be able to address the drainage issues a bit more specifically than that, um, given, given what you're contemplating. I, I, you know, for, for, for what, for me personally, I'm not, I, I'm not comfortable just saying, yes, well, we, we understand that there's a, a building permit that's going to be issued ultimately. Uh, you know, I, I personally would like to hear you address a little more specifically the drainage issues.
The drainage issues regarding the path or the roadway?
Uh, regarding the, the contemplated construction of a new residence on the newly created lot in general.
So I guess my response to that would be any, any, any proposed construction that we, if and when that time comes, will be consistent with the development regulations of the city of Nashua. But we can, we're, we're not going to, um, it's, it's the applicant's position that we're not going to go through that effort without the, uh, understanding that we can have the lot line adjustment approved because we don't even know what we're going to be built. They don't even know what they're going to be building yet. So it's, it's, it's like putting the cart before the horse type of thing. Well, we want to have the lot approved so then we can propose the improvements to be shown and make sure when that time comes, we're conforming with everything and not, 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 um, creating a, a, adverse, um, effect on the lot properties.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, perhaps this is a question for staff, but can you just confirm that without the slot line adjustment, that the, these, this applicant or property owner could not go get a building permit to build on a house in that area currently?
Well, if they don't meet the minimum lot, uh, lot size, which, let's say, right now.
They're currently, the property line, this property line splits the existing.
Right.
Dwelling, so is it, is it allowed to have two dwellings on one parcel?
Right now, because the, um, without the lot line adjustment, because I think they're using the, the other lot because the property line goes right through the existing house.
Yeah, so.
So they couldn't just go get a, a building permit tomorrow.
From my, yeah, from my perspective, this is, it's not a simple lot line adjustment. It's an attempt to create a buildable lot, which otherwise currently isn't. And I agree, I think with Mr. Varley, that I'm currently unsatisfied that we have a buildable lot because, or that we're creating one because, uh, you know, we need to be satisfied that it's not going to create the drainage issues or, uh, exasperate existing drainage issues and things of that effect. Mr. Madoll's review memo did, uh, mention, you know, cite certain sections of the, uh, NROs that speak to drainage as one of his concerns. And it, and I believe these lot line adjustments are treated like, as subdivisions, right?
They're under the subdivision.
So it goes through this, a similar process, uh, you know, basically the same process as a subdivision would, where we, uh, ask for that type of information. So I think it's reasonable to, uh, get that additional information before we approve the slot line adjustment. It's kind of a chicken egg issue, I guess. But to me, to me, based upon the, uh, concerns that have been noted, I, I, I can't support this without some additional information.
Under members of the board, have any questions while we're in, I mean, we're in the hearing still at this point, so. Uh, Mr. Hirsch?
Probably more for staff, I suppose. Uh, if that's a, that path has been used for fifty or sixty years, do the, uh, can they, could someone close that path off?
Eighty years.
I'm sorry?
Excuse me, we're, 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 um, not in public comment at this point.
But could someone close a path off which has been, you know, adverse possession or whatever, it's been utilized for the same purpose?
Well, I'm not an attorney. Perhaps Mr. Varley could probably answer that better than I could, but it doesn't, there's no easement on the property to allow for that.
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Just the utilization, I thought.
It sounds like it's been pretty informal. I mean, you know, adverse possession, it's like going back to law school at this point. Um, I, you know, there's very specific requirements you would have to meet in order for it to qualify for adverse possession, and, you know, I, I don't know whether they would have met those requirements here. But it seems pretty clear that it is, it is on private property, and there is no easement. So in theory, yes, they can close it off.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, a couple of things. One, speaking of the path, I mean, it was, there was testimony to the fact that the property line currently is in the middle of the path. Um, you know, I don't know what the applicant would be willing to do, but I, I think it would be nice if there was an, uh, an easement through there, perhaps split, you know, across both properties. You know, each property provides half of a width for a path, you know? But that's, um, something that would need to be considered by, uh, both, but both property owners. There was discussion about the moratorium, and this is a moratorium, so, uh, that's another reason I feel uncompelled to, that we need to act on this, uh, quickly. I believe it was in moratorium until 2025, if I saw that correctly. It would need a sewer, uh, service, which would involve cutting in the street, which would require Board of Public Works approval. And one of, uh, Mr. Madoll's recommendations was that, you know, plan not be approved, basically, until that moratorium approval was approved. So I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, that's an issue that we've had before where we, I don't want this get to the point that a buildable lot gets created, they go to the building department, they try to get a building permit, and then they have to go get a moratorium, and, um, the Board of Public Works is put in that position of being the last in the full chain of, uh, of review, uh, authority, and they're standing there saying, the planning board approved this, and the building department's ready to give me a permit, but I just need this. And I don't think that's fair, um, to the Board of Public Works, so, um... So anyway, I got, I guess, I guess, I don't know if the, I don't know if we, what the right thing to do would be, and we're still in the meeting here, but, you know, maybe a continuance of this to allow them opportunity to address some of the abutting concerns would be appropriate. But I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple more things in the hearing here, just so that we can get to a point where we want to make a, or decide if we're going to close. So just with respect to underground utilities, underground electric, um, just want to clarify for the public and everybody else looking, that is ordinance in, in Nashua. So that's not an option to go overhead without a waiver from this board. So, um, and generally speaking, and inconsistent with our master plan, we are going towards underground utilities. So we're, you know, um, I'm not generally in favor of, of, you know, having an applicant who's already proposed underground go back above ground. That's, that would be inconsistent with our master plan. But, um, but I can also indicate that, you know, that, uh, you know, likely the utility pole, just from my own experience, is going to be a standard type, you know, uh, utility pole. This isn't, you know, something that would be out of, out of the ordinary here. Uh, but the underground electric would, you know, potentially have a moratorium. They would go over the road, I guess, so that wouldn't be an issue for that. Um, but the drainage piece, I think, you know, is an issue. Um, we, this is not uncommon for us to require additional drainage, um, at least conceptual design. You know, what kinds of, of, um, design features might be contemplated here, whether it's, you know, catch basins, wells, you know, leaching areas, you know? I mean, anytime we have a lot that has a significant gradient on it, um, it's not uncommon for us to want that information as part of any subdivision type work, understanding full well that, you know, residential subdivisions like this one, which even if it's just a lot line adjustment, there is no site plan process that follows it. This is different than a commercial, um, site where we would, you know, potentially see a subdivision, and then we would see a site plan. I mean, this is a one and done for us in this scenario, so, um, okay.
Can I, can I make a comment if I can?
Uh, yes, the applicant can at this ti- at this point, yep.
So, I guess, to, to the comment you just made, um, the, the note that I had added to the plan, note number nine, uh, I just want to, I'll read it out loud. It says, "Prior to the issuance of a, of a building permit, an acceptable lot development plan shall be provided to the building inspector showing all proposed site improvements in accordance to the development regulations." If an acceptable plan cannot be agreed upon, further planning board review and approval may be required. Uh, so that's why I, we're by no means not willing to provide that information to ensure that the lot will not have any effect and will be conforming. We're just saying that it's not the purpose of this application, and it will be done at that time that we issue, uh, our file for a building permit, if and when that time comes. And it gives you, the board, the opportunity to still take further action if we can't come up with that, that acceptable lot development plan.
Yeah, I hear you. Um, it just, that's not typically how this board would work. For this type of residential subdivision, um, we don't generally want notes that require something to come back. Um, we would, you know, I'm just giving you my opinion, but I'm generally going to be looking for some semblance of, of a design, if necessary, to, ahead of my stamping or my signing off on this point. So, you know, that's the typical way this board works, so.
Understood.
Yep. Um, so at this point, um, I guess we can ask questions of the applicant. We should ask questions of the applicant. If there's anybody here contemplating, you know, tabling this, or wants to make a motion to table, you would want to, um, ask the applicant during this hearing whether they would be, you know, willing to provide this additional information at a later date. And it's nothing binding, but I don't want to reopen the hearings so you can talk to them. So if you want to ask one of those questions, do it now. Mr. Varley?
So I, I don't know if it's a question per se, but I, I guess I would suggest this is, this is the motion I would propose to make if I was the motion maker, and then I'll, I can, I'm happy to let the applicant respond to that. Um, so I, I would propose to make a motion to continue the case, and I'd have to look at the calendar to see, I, I would suggest two meetings out to give them sufficient time. Um, and that would be with the understanding that the continuance is for the purpose of allowing the applicant to develop and submit, uh, at least a conceptual level plan as to what the drainage would look like for the newly created lot, um, to be built on. And then additionally, to Mr. Hudson's point, for them to at least consider the easement issue and report back to us on that as well, in terms of what, if anything, they're willing to do in terms of, uh, of an easement for the path.
So I'd give the applicant an opportunity to respond to Mr. Varley there. You don't, obviously not obligated to, but.
Um, so I would propose that we would table it for one meeting and not two. It won't take us all that much time to put together a contemplated plan. However, it was just, like I said, it was one of those things that didn't feel as though it was appropriate or, or, um, required, given the fact that it was, you know, we, we don't know what's proposed. You know, something could, could change tomorrow, and there could be a whole nother proposal for, for the lot. So, um, given the fact that it's, it's, it's simply a contemplated design, a conceptual design, I feel as though the, the next meeting, we would have appropriate enough time to put that.
Okay, um, thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, our next meeting, I believe, is in two weeks' time, and I certainly, if it was submitted tomorrow, I wouldn't guarantee that we would have a review completed by then, um, reviewing the response to Mr. Madoll's comments. I mean, we have a lot of cases we're reviewing, that this has to work into the workflow. Um, so I would, I would lean towards, uh, Mr. Varley's motion of two meetings out, which I believe is the June twenty-third meeting, would seem to make the most sense to me.
June sixteen.
June sixteen, okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, so any other questions during the hearing for the applicant or staff by the board? I don't know about a point where we can, uh, close the hearing, so. All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing.
Oh, I guess just, just one comment that I.
Hang on a sec.
Have would be, you mentioned the ease, mentioned the easement, um, being, being reviewed at that time. What, what level of expectation does the board have that we'll come to an understanding of what should be done about the easement regarding the trail?
Yeah, I mean, in, in my view, would, I, I, not an expectation that you would have, you know, documentation crafted for, for the easement, for example, but really just an indication of, you know, whether, whether the applicant would be willing to consider an easement so that there's some understanding on the part of the neighbors that that, that access would be maintained.
Okay. And. And beyond that, who would be the holder of that easement, in your mind?
Yeah, I, I, we'd have to think about that, I guess.
Wouldn't it be an easement for, to the public benefit for passage? I mean, a trail easement or something that affects?
Yeah, I just don't know how you would, how you would structure that as a matter of documentation, who, who the party would be, I don't know.
I mean, the applicant could communicate with staff on that, I don't think.
Yeah, yeah.
You could work that out with staff in the interim, so. Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and.
Can I just ask one question?
Uh, no, we're, we're gonna, we're.
This is, I'm Jay Lant, and he's the applicant for Collin Brook Investments.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead, sorry, I thought you were another.
That's all right. So, I guess I had a question. I have no problem with the easement, but who, who's gonna be, if, say I give an easement, and maybe this is a question for an attorney, who's gonna be liable if a kid riding his bike down that easement falls over his handlebars and, you know, smashes his head on the, on the, you know, gets hurt? Am I gonna be liable for that?
I guess as a board, I don't, I don't have that information for you, nor would I be, be able to, to comment, but you can certainly ask those questions of the planning staff, and they can direct you to the right people and help you get that, those questions answered.
Yeah, we'll ask Corporation Counsel.
They have access to Corporation Counsel for the city, and they can.
Okay.
Help you through that, yep.
So would the easement, wouldn't take away from the setbacks at all, would it?
Yes.
It would.
Again, I can't answer that, I think you'd have to communicate, you know, go through with staff.
Have email staff, and we'll have to ask the questions.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. No more questions for the applicant by the board? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, so no further discussion on, with the applicant or the public on this, but at this point, the board is in the meeting, so I think it's pretty clear, there's a desire by the board to get additional information on, you know, how, you know, at least conceptual level drainage design. Again, I, I think that's pretty common for this, for easement, we've seen this in several counties. So, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The most recent example I can think of is on Morningside Drive, kind of behind Riviera College, or by that, that area. There was a significant grade separation between abutting properties, and we did ask that applicant to provide supplemental drainage information. So I don't think that that is unreasonable in, in this particular case. The, I guess my only other question would be, I don't know how this is gonna fall out. The easement, honestly, understanding the fact that the community has potentially used that for some time, I might be uncomfortable imposing that condition, forcing someone to give up part of their private property with, with other entanglements involved when there's, there's no, I guess, definitive proof of usage. But if the, if the applicant has already agreed to at least considering that, that's, that's great. I would just be uncomfortable if we were potentially put in a position where we were mandating that an easement be in place. I think that has to be voluntary, unless there were some other extraordinary circumstance where the city can demand an easement, either, either for drainage or utilities, or some other sort of routine maintenance operation. So, it's my, just my opinion on the matter, so.
Yeah, Mr. Ballinger, I think that's consistent with how the boards acted in the past, too, that we asked for consideration. We're really not the, in the business of requiring easements on personal property. I would concur with you on that. Any more discussion in the meeting? For the board? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion on this at this point? Mr. Varley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to table new business, project A22-0064 Lot Line Relocation Plan, and that would be to the June 16th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting, with the understanding that the, the purpose of tabling the application would be to allow the applicant an opportunity to develop and submit a conceptual drainage plan, and also to consider the issue that's been discussed by the board regarding whether they would be potentially amenable to an easement, and to have any discussions with staff in the interim that, that they need to on both of those issues.
Okay, so with that motion by Mr. Varley to table this to June 16th, with the additional clarifications and statements that Mr. Varley made, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right. Yep, yeah, we can have a couple minute break.
Thank you, everyone.
Do we have a place to plug in somewhere? Or are you? Yeah, Scott, do we have the, is there a cord for plugging in?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Does it have to be plugged in?
Does anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan case eight twenty-two dash zero zero three eight.
All right, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction from Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board on the jurisdiction? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? That motion passes. Okay. So we need somebody from the applicant that wants to present the case?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Chad Brandon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Our office is located at two oh six Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire. With me this evening is Kevin Walker with the John Flatley Company. And also with us tonight is our traffic engineer, Jason Plord from VHB. We are before you this evening seeking a subdivision approval for a fifty-eight lot conservation subdivision on the northern portion of the Gateway Hills property currently owned by the John Flatley Company. The Gateway Hills development formerly known as the Nashua Technology Park encompasses approximately four hundred acres of land and is developed with mixed use uses with professional office space, research and development buildings, retail space, restaurants, hotel, and multifamily residential buildings. Gateway Hills is currently serviced by one public road being Tara Boulevard and three private roads Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. The subdivision that we are presenting this evening does not connect to the existing roadway infrastructure which is situated on the southern portion of the four hundred acre site. This subdivision will connect to Spindelwick Drive through an existing right-of-way which will tie the proposed subdivision into an existing established residential neighborhood to the west of the property. This proposed subdivision will consist of merging nine existing lots and discontinuing a or extinguishing and discontinuing a portion of Doza Road. The existing lots that will be merged as part of this project would be tax map lots A fifty-eight, six, A sixty-seven, excuse me, A sixty-eight, A seven sixty-eight, A nine ninety, A nine ninety-four, one fourteen dash two thirty-one, one thirty-two dash one, and one thirty-two dash eighty-five. These properties together total just over fifty acres of land. The northern twenty-three point three acres of this project area is situated in the R-18 zone and the southern portion which consists of twenty-six point eight acres is situated in the R-40 zone. That zone line is depicted on the plans that we have before you this evening. The subject properties are currently vacant and the topography on-site generally slopes from west to east towards the FE Everett Turnpike. The property is primarily wooded with upland areas but does have a few wetland fingers which we've delineated on the plans. One wetland area is situated on the northern portion of the site and generally flows to the northeast. One area is centrally located and drains to the east and the other wetland area is situated on the southeast portion of the site. And that also flows to the east to the, again, the FE Everett Turnpike area. The layout of this proposed subdivision has taken shape over the last few years and has incorporated many meetings, meetings with city staff and departments, as well as two neighborhood meetings where we've really taken in a lot of the feedback that we received and we've made significant changes to the plan and ultimately those changes are presented on the plan that we have before you this evening. Those revisions in some form have consisted of increasing buffering to adjacent residential areas. We've also gone forward and prepared some studies that are not technically triggered for this project such as a traffic study since this project doesn't meet the thresholds outlined in the traffic impact report worksheet that's required when we submit a subdivision of this nature. This project proposes, as I stated before, a fifty-eight lot subdivision which will provide fairly large-sized lots, good separation between the homes, and substantial buffering to the neighborhood. Without applying any density bonuses, this project and the subject properties could have been developed by right with eighty-five units. That math is shown and depicted on our plans just as a requirement per the calculations. And if we took into consideration the city's new inclusionary zoning for the affordable housing, that density could have approached somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred and ten units. We share these numbers only to give perspective to the nature of this proposal which we believe is a very reasonable development over a fifty-acre portion of property. The proposed fifty-eight lot subdivision will be serviced by four roads that are shown on the plan. Those roads can create an internal loop traffic pattern. The roads terminate in three dead-end cul-de-sacs. All of those do meet city standards. The roadways and all associated infrastructure servicing this project will be private in nature. The roads in total consist of about forty-six hundred linear feet, so that's adding up all the roadways and the cul-de-sac areas. The proposed roadways will be twenty-eight feet in width and will be curbed with closed drainage. And the site has been designed to provide for safe pedestrian and vehicular traffic which will handle not only daily traffic but emergency response vehicles and we've gone through that review with the city fire department and engineering department. There will be an internal sidewalk network associated with this project with sidewalks positioned on one side of the proposed roadway system. The development will also include the construction of a seventeen hundred square foot clubhouse which is a site amenity that's not technically required with associated site improvements. And what I mean by that is there's associated parking. We do comply with the parking requirements for the clubhouse. That was one of the comments that came up in one of the department reviews. Other anticipated site amenities will include a pool and barbecue stations near the clubhouse area as well as recreational trails which has always been something that the John Flatley Company has tried to provide throughout this site. This project will also place twenty-five point one five acres of land into conservation open space which will be protected area that does meet the city's requirements for open space calculations and that's depicted on our plans as well. This proposal also embraces the city's inclusionary zoning for affordable housing and will provide for six affordable housing units. We did include those calculations on the revised plans after reviewing that with city staff. This development will be serviced by municipal sewer, Penachuck Water, natural gas, underground electric, and communications. And the connection to the municipal sewer system for this project will consist of a network of gravity sewers piping that'll ultimately be routed to a pump station and from there it'll be pumped up to Spindelwick to an existing manhole at the intersection of the proposed roadway at the Spindelwick intersection. Other site improvements with this project include landscaping, lighting, drainage, and utility infrastructure. The lighting plans for this site will consist of installing pole-mounted lights at all of the internal intersections. So we're not proposing a pole-mounted light at the intersection with Spindelwick but we are proposing a pole-mounted light at all of the internal intersections, so there'll be four of those internally. And we did produce an exhibit plan that depicted that at staff's request. All the lighting will be LED and has been designed to meet all of the city standards. The lighting design for this project will be residential grade and what I mean by that it's really meant to be accent lighting giving people an idea of where they're traveling. You know, it's nice to have lights at intersections in our opinion. There will be some lighting around the clubhouse for the parking area as well and those are detailed within the plan set and also meet all the city criteria. The drainage design for this project consists of collecting and conveying the storm water runoff from all of the improved areas to four storm water management areas. This is accomplished through the closed drainage system with the roadway network as well as a series of conveyance wells that collect the runoff from the house sites and convey them to drainage culverts or the closed drainage system ultimately relaying that runoff to those four storm water management areas. Those areas will consist of two wet ponds and two infiltration basins and those practices will ultimately address the qualitative and quantitative mitigation for this project. We have submitted a detailed storm water management report with this application and that report does show that there will be no increases in any of the design storms, peak rate of runoff as a result of this project due to the mitigation that we're proposing. So in summary, that storm water management design complies with the city ordinance but also complies with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services alteration of terrain standards as this project will trigger that permit. There are wetland buffers and two wetland crossings proposed for this project. They total sixty-seven hundred square feet in size. They're associated with the roadway network and we have been before the Conservation Commission and have obtained, successfully obtained support from them as well as secured the special exception from the zoning board for these impacts. The plan that we have before you tonight does comply with all of the conditions associated with those recommendations and from both of the boards as well. We have had the benefit of reviewing the staff report and we have also been working on addressing all of the department comments that we've received and we have no issues with any of the staff or department comments, recommendations, or conditions and we do hope that we will ultimately be able to secure a conditional approval from the board this evening. Certainly happy to address any questions that the board may have relative to those reviews as we are actively addressing some of the comments but we believe that all of them at this point are pretty minor in nature. With this application, we are requesting two waivers. The waiver requests are from section one ninety-two seventy-nine B regarding drafting standards and plans not being smaller than fifty feet to one inch as our overall site plan is drafted at one hundred scale in order to fit the subject property on one sheet. We are also requesting a waiver from section one ninety-two seventy-nine EE pertaining to the location of physical features within a thousand feet of the site. We have detailed both of those waiver requests in our application and would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have when you choose to review those. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to have our traffic engineer come up and maybe just give a brief overview of the traffic report unless the board would like to ask me questions at this time.
Typically go through the presentation then we'll do questions afterwards.
Good evening. Jason Plord with VHB to Bedford Farm Road in Bedford, New Hampshire. This project started for us back in January and I know a lot of other site work was going on previous to then but we got involved in January. We submitted a traffic impact report threshold worksheet to Mr. Husband and some supporting information. Based on the information provided in there, we had to generate traffic for the proposed development and compare that to what the city's thresholds are as far as on a peak-hour basis for the adjacent street traffic, the peak hour generator, and on a daily basis. On all of those conditions, we don't trigger the threshold, however. We understand that there are a lot of concerns within the neighborhood, so we ended up having a neighborhood meeting in February and heard a lot of different concerns as far as speeding, maybe some taking a look at different types of items that might be able to help as far as traffic calming or whether that's going to be with multiway stops, whether it's going to be some pavement striping, whatever kind of other methods might be considered. So what we had done was we had gone out in March, we collected some traffic counts. We collected traffic counts at four identified locations and then also we were provided traffic volumes from February at the signalized intersection of East Dunstable Road and Harris Road just because that signal had been identified as queuing back to Timberline Drive. So we compiled all the information, we then applied different factors to those traffic counts. We needed to be able to adjust them to peak month conditions based on New Hampshire DOT standards and we also increased those traffic volumes to account for the pandemic. You know, traffic volumes are increasing but they're certainly not the way that they were back in two thousand nineteen. So we had to increase those traffic volumes in addition to the peak month condition. We collected some speed data at different locations as well as hourly traffic volumes. And the purpose of that was to be able to identify if there's any speeding conditions that are taking place, to be able to use that information also to find out if always-stop control would be warranted. And what I mean by warranted is that as traffic engineers, as you have a couple of traffic engineers that are on the board this evening, they know that we have to follow different methodologies and guidelines. In this particular instance, we followed the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices abbreviated as MUTCD. And those warrants are based on traffic volumes, they're based on speeds, they're based on site distances, they're based on crashes. We also coordinated with the city police department and obtained crash data for all of these intersections. And all these intersections, they included East Dunstable Road and Timberline Drive, Timberline Drive and Spindelwick Drive, Byron Drive and Shadowbrook Drive, Spindelwick Drive, Shadowbrook Drive, and then also the East Dunstable and Harris Road. Those were the five intersections that were identified back in our February neighborhood meeting. And what we did was we evaluated that information and we came up with different potential measures to be able to help improve circulation, traffic flow, and speeds. We did identify that there's the potential of striping a double yellow or center line down Timberline Drive. Now, the thing with double yellow center lines is that when you have an open roadway without center line striping, people might feel a little bit more free to travel to the left a little bit because there's nothing stopping them on the left side. Out there on Timberline, there's a white edge line on the side for a shoulder. So what would end up having to happen would be if you put in that center line, you can't have, you really don't want to have a travel lane less than ten feet wide, so you'd have to shrink that shoulder. And the problem is is that, I don't want to say it's a problem, but the condition is that that would pretty much eliminate on-street parking. We don't want to do that. So we coordinated with Mr. Husband and he issued an email on May eighteenth that said that the city has gone away from striping double yellow center lines on neighborhood streets. Also as part of center line striping is the fact that you don't want to just do it periodically within a neighborhood like what we have here. You want to make sure that there's almost like a planning study that's done, an overall holistic approach as opposed to just looking at one section, just so at least there's some continued continuity, let's change the word, consistency, just so that, you know, anybody that's driving along these roadways in order to get to East Dunstable Road, at least they're going to have some familiarity with a different type of pavement markings and signage. Now, as far as the always-stop control, that's another measure that traffic engineers need to follow, like there's a liability associated with us changing traffic control just arbitrarily. We have to follow certain standards, guidelines, regulations. And based on the MUTCD, we looked at several locations. We looked at Timberline and Spindelwick, Byron and Shadowbrook, Spindelwick and Shadowbrook. And the traffic volumes don't trigger the need for always-stop. The site distances are fine out there. They don't require always-stop. And the crashes, the reported crashes out there, don't indicate the need for an always-stop. So based on that information, if we put in an always-stop, there's a liability there because it's not supported by the national guideline. Now, the other thing that we took a look at was the traffic signal timing at East Dunstable and Timberline, I'm sorry, East Dunstable and Harris Road and how it stacks back to Timberline. That signal is tied in with four other signalized intersections, so it's a coordinated system. There's a signal that's on Harris at Northeastern Boulevard and then going to the north on East Dunstable, we have the Everett Turnpike, Northbound and Southbound ramps, and then also the one at Lund Road. All five of those are tied in together. Some of them are under DOT jurisdiction, some of them are under city jurisdiction, but they're all talking with each other so that the intent of, there's two intents of a coordinated system. The first intent is that you get a red light at the first signal and then you're supposed to have a green light all the way along the corridor. The other intent of a coordinated system is that you're not stuck between two signals. All of the delay in the queuing is supposed to be designed to occur on the outside of the system. So if any traffic signal timings are adjusted at East Dunstable and Harris Road, then that may change the traffic patterns and I'm not saying that's wrong, but it may change the operations at the other intersections and may change some of the timings there. And that's something that if it is an existing issue and concern, that we totally support the city and the state working together to see if any kind of adjustments can be made to the signal timings because you don't want people having a hard time getting out of side streets and out of residential areas like the one that we have here. You want to be able to provide them with the opportunity of gaps. Gaps in the traffic stream mean that you have a platoon of cars that go along a corridor and once they're gone, there's an emptiness that you can actually turn left or turn right whether it's from the side street or onto the side street. So that's, those are really important things to consider as far as the existing concerns that were identified during the neighborhood meeting in February. So, again, to reiterate, we don't meet the warrants or the criteria that the city has for putting together a traffic study based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual Methodologies, but we understand that there were some safety concerns that were identified out here. I want to get into the speeds for one thing. So we did a speed study on Spindelwick and that was between both ends of Brackenwood Drive. And we also did a speed study along Timberline that was east of Byron Drive. What we found was that traffic speeds were actually measured on Spindelwick to be consistent with the speed limit, the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour. The reason what we figured out was that because of the on-street parking, people are actually driving slower on Spindelwick. There were less cars parked on Timberline and people were going a little bit faster and then plus with the downhill coming down Timberline as you're going from the east to the west. Now, those speeds were exceeded the posted speed limit and that's why we had come up with different types of suggestions, potential ideas that the DPW could consider installing. Not that we wouldn't be helping to contribute to those improvements, but it's really the city's decision on what type of improvements could go on their local roadway system. So that's why we wanted to make sure that, you know, we were being transparent every step of the way when we submitted our initial information to Wayne, when we met with the neighbors, when we prepared the traffic study. All of the traffic study was submitted back in April, so we just wanted to make sure that we had all that information out there so that there was going to be some plenty of time for local officials to be able to digest the information that we submitted and making sure that we weren't missing anything before we came to the planning board hearing. So if you have any questions, I'm here. If you want to hear other comments and then come back to me, that's perfectly fine too, however you want to do it. I'll leave it up to you, Mr. Chairman.
I guess, Chad, is there any more presentation from your group?
The only other thing that I would like to present and I guess just to follow up on Jason's presentation is that we are in receipt of Mr. Husband's May eighteenth email with, he kind of touches on what the city's recommendations are relative to traffic and then he concludes by calculating a voluntary fee for contribution and we do not oppose that fee. So we would be willing to contribute to that which I think is, you know, a contribution to, you know, some of these efforts maybe down the road as well. That's all that I had at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I just have a couple of questions probably for you, Chad. Can you just talk a little bit about why the conservation subdivision concept was, is being proposed? Why that type of subdivision?
Sure. Yeah, so if you look at, I guess, just this plan here, the conservation subdivision came into play when we really started to look at, you know, how can we provide additional buffering to the adjacent neighborhood? How can we provide maybe some additional buffering to the highway system as well? And, you know, and we took into consideration that this is, there's an existing city park and conservation easement to the north of the site or I shouldn't say conservation easement, but existing land preservation north of the site. So when we started looking at that and started contemplating, you know, the type of density that Mr. Flatley wanted to accomplish, we felt that a conservation subdivision really was the best project for all parties. It allowed us to, you know, consolidate the development a little bit internally, provide additional buffering to the neighboring properties, and ultimately allow for some of that passive recreation that Mr. Flatley always tries to have on his project. We did at one time have a conventional plan that backed up right to the back of the properties along Spindelwick, so if you could imagine, we had, you know, about maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet in, away from the, the backyards backed entirely up to the backyards on Spindelwick and then we had a road that was there and then we had lots on the other side and we laid that out just to show, you know, the landowner that this was, this was an option. Shortly after, you know, I think attending our first neighborhood meeting, we got strong feedback that they would like to have some buffer between, you know, their backyard areas and our site, even though the developments are very compatible and consistent. In fact, the lot sizes even in our proposed conservation subdivision are nearly the same as the lot sizes of the adjacent developments. But in the interest of trying to work, you know, with the neighborhood and at the request really is, you know, city staff guided us to meet with the neighborhood on at least two occasions, you know, we chose to go in that direction.
Okay. And just to clarify, because I feel like I heard it this way, you did not take density, additional density allowances?
Correct.
That are allowed by the conservation subdivision?
Correct. So the conserva, so if you look at just a grid subdivision, if we just looked at a conventional subdivision, this property would support eighty, potentially eighty-five units. That might be high when you start looking at, you know, we need to account for roads and stuff like that, but a strict math calculation is eighty-five units. That's your base density when you go into a conservation subdivision. And then within the conservation subdivision, there's a there's additional density bonuses that you can take by, you know, meeting point structures within there. And many of them we meet, actually, with this project, because there's some, you know, you have to provide public space, you know, up to, I think, 250 square feet of public space per lot, and you get some bonuses and so on. But we're certainly not, we're not even exceeding the base density of a conservation subdivision, which is 85 units. We're at 58. So we're not taking advantage of any density bonuses with this proposal.
Okay. And then as far as the construction intent of the, the homes and the public, or I guess just say shared buildings to the, to the conservation subdivision, was, was there any kind of architectural intent submitted at this point? Or can you describe the, uh, sometimes we do see, like, typical plans. I mean, I don't know if it's a requirement. I, I, I'm trying to understand the scale of the home and, or proposed homes and...
Yeah, it was very typical homes. I think they range, we, we had three, three or four options that we looked at when we were positioning the, you know, the homes. And they ranged, I believe, from 1,500 to 2,000 square feet in size, maybe a little bit higher on the larger unit. Each of the homes will have a two-car garage in this, in this particular layout, or we at least accounted for that in, in the layout. We've graded all the lots. We've done, you know, we've, we've basically proven out this entire development. And there'll be, you know, some options for house, you know, house styles that would fit within that footprint. But I would say these will be conventional, typical homes, nice architectural, you know, some roofline breakup. There might be some single-floor living option, but others may be two-story.
But generally speaking, these are not sort of the 3,500 square foot plus homes? This is smaller than that?
Correct. Yeah, I don't think we have a footprint that's over 3,000 square feet on this place.
There and down. Okay. And can you describe the clubhouse conceptually?
Sure. So we basically took one of the clubhouse floor plans from Tara Heights, which is another development that we, we did in the city with the John Flatley Company. So this would be the clubhouse on Phase Two of Tara Heights, which is a 1,700-square-foot clubhouse. Has a pool area, has some, you know, areas on the outside for, you know, maybe some barbecuing and so on. But it's really just an amenity for the residents of, of, of this, this development. I mean, we're quite detached from the, the southern portion, so and, and even in the Tara Heights layout, we had two clubhouses, you know, for people to access. So this is just an amenity that the John Flatley Company wants to, to offer to this development. It'll be a private facility. It'll be in, in, it's private roads and private infrastructure. So there will be a homeowner's association with documents that, that kind of outline that and the ownership of the, of the conservation area as well.
And you mentioned there would be, like, walking paths and things like that. Are those limited in use to the conservation subdivision occupants? Or is, what is the intent? Is this, is this sort of open to the neighborhoods, like?
I, I think I'll let maybe Mr. Walker answer that.
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Walker from the John Flatley Company. So this, the walking trails that we will have in here are going to be similar to what we have in the lower half of Gateway Hills. Technically, they're private, but we, we don't, you know, we have people from outside the development walking those trails every day. And as long as it's not abused, then we don't have any issue. So, so we're, we're fine with the public going through there as long as, you know, they're respectful of it. Don't, you know, don't wreck anything, that type of thing, you know. They walk their dog, pick up after it, that type of, yeah.
Yeah. So the intent is not like a, a closed subdivision where the, like, gate that people have to walk through?
No, we're, we're definitely not, not gating it. As a matter of fact, you, you can kind of see in this area here, there's like a little path in here. That's actually a an access for the fire department. We're actually going to make that as part of our walking trail.
Okay. Okay. And can, can you explain for the board the thinking behind this not connecting to Gateway Hills roadway?
Yeah, well, there's, I mean, there's, there's a couple. I mean, if you, you can speak after me if you want to.
Sure.
Um, there, there's a couple. One, it's about 3,000 feet away.
Okay.
To connect it. And the biggest thing, again, going back to our discussions with the existing neighbors up there, we hit on everything. We hit everything from traffic to open space to, you know, trails, animals, and, and as far as connecting to the south end. It's the general feeling, if not the absolute feeling, of the folks up to the north side that live there now is to not have traffic from the industrial district come through there. And tha, and that's how we've designed it at this point, so.
Okay. So the idea is to, to limit the potential, because obviously there would be a bigger volume of traffic to the south, not heading north?
Right, yeah. I mean, you know, that, that's a pretty big neighborhood up there. A lot of streets, a lot of houses. You know, and it's not really designed for industrial use.
Okay.
So that, that's how we've, that's how we've planned it right now, so.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Other questions by the board? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, this is a question for Mr. Plourd.
Yes?
So, obviously appreciating that you were technically under the thresholds and, and so not required to prepare a traffic report here, so first of all, we, we appreciate all the information and background you provided. But just, i- if you, if you know the answer to this question, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of accounting for the fact that you're under the traffic thresholds. Do you have a sense of, you know, what sort of the relative comparison is to the traffic that this project will generate as compared to the Long Hill Estates neighborhood as it exists now? Sort of just give us a sort of a ballpark sense of what that looks like?
Sure. What, what we did was add, what, one, two, three, four, five, five of the intersections I had listed earlier. We added our site trips to that and projected them out to a future design condition based on the city's guidelines for the traffic studies. And then we ran the intersection analyses. So what we found was that everything is still below the, it's level of service D or better, sort of a situation. And that's outlined specifically within the TI Traffic Impact Report Thresholds Criteria is to make sure that you're not exceeding different levels of service, different delay increases. And it's, you know, it's, it's really negligible as far as, let, let me give you an example of the, the traffic. So in the morning, we're talking about 12 entering, 34 exiting in an hour. Right? So that, you know, the exiting is the larger number, right? So that's, that's close to, you know, that's more than one car every, you know, it's less than one car every one and a half minutes. Right? So, I mean, we can sit here for 90 seconds and count, and, you know, we're, okay, all right, stop counting, sort of a thing. And then in the evening, we have, it's, it's pretty much like a reverse sort of a thing. We have 38 coming home and 22 exiting. And, you know, as far as those traffic volumes, you know, it's not even one a minute as far as entering or exiting. It doesn't meet the city's criteria. It doesn't meet DOT's criteria. It doesn't meet ITE's criteria as far as anything that would be a noticeable impact. Noticeable impact would require some kind of improvements. It would require some further evaluations. And so what is considered in this standard engineering world is that if you're below those thresholds, that could be based on a fluctuation over the course of a day, over the course of a week, over the course of a month, over the course of the year, that it's really not going to be that noticeable. And, and that's why it's, you know, that's why the city has the criteria that, that you do.
In those counts you just described, are those, are those at the intersection of the, of Road A and Shadowbrook?
Yeah. So what we did was, when we had our neighborhood meeting, we wanted to make sure that we were providing a worst-case scenario. And so what we had done was we said, should we assume, and we asked the neighbors this, should we assume that all of our vehicles are going to be coming out of our site and then you going all the way down Timberline to East Dunstable? Or is it realistic to assume that some might be using Shelley or Browning Ave? And reality is, yes, some cars might do that, but a worst-case scenario would be sending everybody to the East Dunstable and Timberline Drive. And that's what we did in our traffic study. We evaluated those impacts under the worst-case scenario. And still, we're not triggering the thresholds of the operations of a noticeable impact, the increases in delays, things like that.
And just, and, and I, again, I don't know if, if this is something you look at in the study or if you can answer this question in, in this fashion. But when you add those trips, as you said, you're taking worst-case scenario, and you're adding every one of those exiting trips, for example, in the AM peak hour to Timberline and East Dunstable.
Correct.
Do you have a sense of what the percentage increase would be as a result of those trips as compared to the, the current state of affairs?
I don't know the percent, but I can give you a comparison as far as volume.
Yeah, that was perfect.
As concerned. So what we, what we have is that there are, in the morning, we have 180 cars that are exiting in the morning. And we would be adding 34 to that. In the evening, we, there are 165, and we would be adding 22.
Thank you.
Those are per hour?
Per hour, correct. Per hour.
Other questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, maybe more a question for staff. I believe I, I heard Mr. Brandon state that Dozer Road was going to be discontinued, or at least part of it, as a public way. Does that need to be dealt with in some manner, perhaps not by this body? But is there, is there a formal process that needs to be addressed? And does that affect any decision that this board may make this evening?
One of the conditions of, of the staff report indicates that they will need to go to the Board of Alderman to discontinue that road, because that's a public road. Thank you.
If, if I may, too, just
Sure.
Kind of speak to that. We've been with, with the improvements in Gateway Hills, kind of as we improve sections, we've been discontinuing Dozer Road along its path. So when Innovative Way was extended and the hotel was constructed and, and all of those improvements were done, we discontinued Dozer Road through that section. And that was a condition of approval at that time, that we handled that before the Board of Alderman as well. So it, it's been a common practice on this site. That road was constructed back when the FE Everett Turnpike kind of cut off all these properties as kind of an access road primarily to, right now, to access all of Mr. Flatley's properties. So we've been, you know, taking the appropriate steps as developments have happened.
And I guess, Chad, before you leave, so there was in the packet, obviously, the older concept of the interchange that would connect with Dozer, right? Potentially, I mean, I know it's not in any current, like, going to happen soon scenario. But is there, is this development in any way, shape, or form limit the ability of that? I, I think that's further south.
It's further south, yeah.
Overall, flat, in property, right?
Right. We, we did a concept for that quite a few years back now. It was, it was, it was south by probably a couple thousand feet
Right.
of, of this area. And it was actually not to Dozer Road. We were showing an, an, an extension of Innovative Way tying into, at the time, it was kind of a roundabout, one directional, so that we were trying to actually prevent any traffic from having the opportunity to go north into the residential area, because that's always been a concern that's raised, has been raised. But, you know, that, that this, this subdivision will not compromise that potential if it, if it ever needs to be done in the future.
But it doesn't compromise the ability of that potential interchange supporting sort of the south end of the development?
Correct.
Additionally, okay. Other questions by the board? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Cherry? Yes. Will these be sold off as individual building lots, or will it be community ownership? I, I just wasn't sure of the intended ownership structure.
Yeah, at this point, we, we haven't really made a decision. It, we were back and forth on a couple of, the way, you know, houses are being sold, you know, that may be the better profitable way to go. But we, we haven't made any decision at this point.
Just seems like houses are selling like hotcakes. I didn't know if Mr. Flatley intended to retain complete ownership and rent the units, or if he was going to sell off individual lots. I, I guess I'm trying to understand what, what the...
We're not 100% sure on exactly how we're going to do it. We, we do know that we are going to retain ownership, obviously, of the clubhouse. The, the rest of it, we're, we're still kind of hashing through.
Okay. Other questions by the board? All right. If not, I'm going to go ahead and start opening up to public testimony, because I assume there's some people here. I know that Alderman is here, so I'm going to go ahead and, and open to him. And again, go ahead and state your name and address, and then any questions or comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Derek Tebow, 9 Emerson Road. I just want to thank the board for letting me speak. It, it's disappointing that we don't have a full board tonight and that my peer is not here as well. I was hoping this is an important decision, and it's a, you can see by the amount of people that are here tonight that it's important to Ward Eight and it's important to the residents. I ask you, the board, to please listen to the abutters that are here and listen to anybody that may be on Zoom. These are the people that are affected the most. Couple of things that, that I'm concerned about, and a couple of things I've heard tonight. Still haven't heard anybody talk about a master plan for the 400 acres that they have. We've asked for that. I know zoning's asked for it, planning, the planning department here at City Hall has asked for it. Still nothing on that. Let me talk about the traffic study for a minute. So they're right in saying that we've had two meetings, right? I've been to both of the last two meetings we had. One was the, I think it was the Saturday before Christmas, so you can imagine how many people were at that meeting. The, the next meeting was specifically about traffic. Mr. Plourd was there. These people and the people that were there that, that day brought up tons and tons of concerns that they had. And we were promised a traffic study. When I say we're promised a traffic study, that means someone's going to get it to me so I can share it with the people of my ward. Okay? I asked about a month and a half ago, or a month ago, to Kevin, and he said they were still putting it together. And then this week, or last week, I got a couple of sheet, or sheet pages, a couple of pages. And I sent it out to my ward, and on the top of it was December, which was before the February meeting with Mr. Plourd. So I come in today finding out we do have a traffic study that was done April 28th, or it was, it was given to our Nashua, Mr. Husband or, or Director Husband, and was given it, and I've never seen it. And so that's disappointing that they've failed to, to make a commitment that they made when they came to that neighborhood meeting. And so I wasn't even going to bring that piece up, but then they, they offered that, they actually had one today. So that's disappointing. So I did a speed study with the Nashville Police for Timberline Road, and I've shared it with Mr. Hudson and Mr. Husband. And there was speeding on that road. There was speeding on that road. There's no doubt about it. I've shared that with my constituents. I don't know what speed study they did. I don't know how they did it. The Nashville Police set up speed boxes, so people didn't know that they were there. You know, they promised things that they would, they, they could do if, to mitigate some of the issues. And everything that they talked about today, they came up and said, we can't do. When you come down Timberline Road and you're taking a left onto East Dunstable, you're risking your life there. It's dangerous to take that left. Taking the right's hard, too, but taking the left is definitely dangerous. To add any more cars to that, even if it's just a few, is adding to... To add any more cars to that, even if it's just a few, is adding to something that's already dangerous. So that's, that's the traffic in the speed study. Dozer, Dozer Road. So, you know, they talked about they didn't want traffic coming in so that it goes cutting through that neighborhood. Why can't we not have Shadow Brook go into there? Why can't we just use Dozer Road and not come in there at all? I know they said that they didn't want to mix some of the, you know, these houses with the apartments and the, you know, some of the R and D work, the buildings that are there. And so I can understand that, I guess. But they can use Dozer Road if they wanted to. They could. Couple of questions I have for them that you guys, that I'm gonna ask you guys to ask them at some point. And maybe you guys know, maybe the planning staff knows. Fire Department, have they signed off on this plan? Is this an okay plan for them to be able to get into this area and, you know, and service anything that needs to be done? You know, one of my questions was rental or sale, and you guys just asked that question. And again, we've been asking that for a long time in these neighborhood meetings. We never get the answer to that. It's always cagey. It was, I don't know. I don't know at all. We may, we may not. So if we could, you know, obviously, you don't have the answer to that tonight, but if you could ask about the Fire Department, that would be helpful. And lastly, just again, please listen to the people that are gonna speak tonight. They, you know, they care about this, believe me. If not, they'd be home watching the Celtics, because I know I would be. So please, listen to them, and thank you.
Okay, thanks. Afterwards, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some folks come up, so can, just give me an idea of how many folks want to talk so I can understand. Okay. That's fine. You're all obviously welcome. I would give a couple of things that we'd like to see is, you know, try to listen carefully to what the person in front of you is saying. We're completely fine with ditto. I agree with all of what the other person said in front of you. And don't repeat it again, because then that just gets long and long and long and doesn't really help anybody's case, and everybody gets confused at some point. So, so try to, you know, do it that way. We can, we'll take note of that, for sure. The applicant generally will be listening. We're trying to get new things that people want to talk about, so. Try to pay attention just to what the other people are saying and add on as necessary. And then, you know, agree or disagree, you know, with what other people have said is generally the most effective way to provide input to us, so. So at this point, I'll ask, you know, and if you're gonna talk, it's probably better to just sort of line up at some point back there. I'll start with the man in the back in the sweatshirt, because he was, he was already up there. And remember, I need a name and address for record.
Yes, absolutely.
Try to keep your comments to like under two minutes, because if you go too long, I'm gonna have to...
My name is Philip Howard. I'm a resident of 8 Aspen Court in Nashville. I'm here on behalf of my mother as well, who also lives at the same location. We've been a longtime resident there. My family's lived in the same location for 40 years. I'm not gonna reiterate some of the dangers that were brought up as far as the speeding. I do want to reiterate the information that I was given from that speed study. Out of 9,100 approximate cars, I think it's important to know that of all of them, the 50th percentile were speeding, exceeding the 25 mile an hour speed limit, with the max speed going uphill of 58 miles per hour, and the max speed going downhill of 64 miles per hour. As a walker in this neighborhood, this is incredibly dangerous, as you know. I also want to address the street itself. It's falling apart. It was recently repaved at the bottom of the hill. You already see a seam. The seam will need to be repaired. Consistently every six months, they're out there repaving the road, fixing the potholes. It's an ongoing thing over the past three years. I believe that this is only going to magnify those issues of the streets falling apart. And I also just, you know, before you guys really make a decision here, I'd like you guys to just challenge you guys to come visit the neighborhood itself and see how dangerous these roads are. It's unsafe to walk on the streets with dogs, with children. You know, I know I do live on a cul-de-sac, but we're set far back enough where I hear these vehicles doing burnouts and accelerating up the hill regularly. And it's just, it's, it's excessive. You know, and I just, you know, take that into account when you're adding these additional traffic to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Good evening. David Deacon, I live at 4 Spindelwick Drive in Long Hill Estates. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. I also, can I submit this into the record? I have a petition opposing this development, but more importantly, the connection that they're trying to make to our existing neighborhood. There's 160 signatures on here. Can I, am I able to submit this into the record? Thank you. So 4 Spindelwick is where I live, is literally the epicenter of everyone coming and going from this neighborhood. So I have a vested interest in more vehicles in my neighborhood. So firstly, the big item here, as Derek mentioned, there is no master plan, okay? There never has been a master plan. Everyone keeps asking for one, and there isn't one. Our concern as a neighborhood, I believe, one of the big concerns is if you allow this connection to our existing neighborhood, yes, it's only a neighborhood of 58 houses. Like Mr. Walker said at one of the meetings, it's only 58 houses. I'll be shocked if I, if you see any increase in traffic at all. I beg to differ. That is just the tip of the iceberg. What happens with no master plan that Mr. Flatley decides to tack on another neighborhood and another neighborhood? Now, you go from 116 cars, that's based on two cars per household minimum, okay? A lot of people have more than two cars per household. Now you go from 116 cars to possibly several hundred coming in and out of the neighborhood. We are the, we're gonna be the only ingress and egress for everybody living in that new neighborhood. Our roads, the infrastructure of our roads, we have white lines on the sides. That's not for on-street parking. Those are there for people walking, especially on Timberline. Timberline has no sidewalks at all. Those white lines are there for us to walk, our kids to ride their bikes. We don't feel safe walking in that neighborhood unless there's a sidewalk. It's not safe, okay? People speed terribly down Timberline, okay? They, they come from the top of Timberline around the corner of my house, and they just, they hammer it on that turn. I've had a car on my front lawn before. I've witnessed people hit telephone poles on their way down Timberline, okay? It's not safe as it is right now. And in my opinion, this is just gonna compound the problem. Now, I know in my gut that Flatley will most likely build this neighborhood. And I'm proposing to you a compromise here. Do not allow a primary connection from Spindelwick and Shadow Brook to this new neighborhood. If you want to put an emergency access only road there with a gate, I think that's probably perfectly acceptable. But allow the neighborhood traffic to come in from a different route. Flatley is concerned that it's gonna increase traffic on Spitbrook. Okay, but it's going to increase traffic in our neighborhood. So apparently, that's not a concern, is it? You put a gate there, which is either Knox lock, or it's activated by a vehicle opticon. EMS, Fire Police, that's the only ones that can enter there, okay? I've been a firefighter paramedic for 30 years. I understand the magnitude of having an emergency access. And I don't think anyone is opposed to having an emergency access there with a gate, correct? But not as the primary route of egress and ingress into our neighborhood. So I, I thank you. I appreciate you listening to me. I get very passionate about subjects. I apologize, but thank you. That's all I have to say. I'll let someone else talk.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Christy Hart. I'm on 9 Dustin Drive. I'm here today to express my concerns about this development in hopes that you will reject the proposal or at least table it until the concerns mentioned here today are addressed. My husband and I lived in Westford, Mass, and we decided to move when I was pregnant with our third child. When house hunting, a must-have was a quiet street because the road we lived on was unpredictable and unsafe for our children, much like what Shadow Brook is going to become. A lot of people talk about Timberline, but Shadow Brook is one of the entry points to this, and it tees off with my current house. Our Westford home was located on a street that was one of two possible entry points to another neighborhood. Our road, however, was a straight path, and once cars reached that stretch, it turned into a dragway. The town tried placing a speed limit sign, which transitioned to a radar speed sign, and neither yielded a noticeable change in driving behavior. Should this development get approved, I can adjust the walks of my children, but I feel for and sympathize with those that live on Shadow Brook. Flatley hosted a traffic study meeting, one of the two, months back to address concerns such as this, and they promised us this full traffic study, which now we learned did actually happen. However, when I, one of the things that they said is that they want to be a part of our community. They said that numerous times. However, when looking at their developmental plan, there's the pool, the clubhouse, and the parking lot at the edge of the property. When I noticed this, I emailed Kevin, asking him if this is supposed to be for everyone or just the new development. His answer was, as expected, which was the clubhouse and pool shown is for the residents of the new development. It's similar to everyone having a pool in their backyard, except in this case, it's a single pool and clubhouse for the residents. This should tell us these two things. One is this development is not an extension of our existing community. Two, in actuality, our neighborhood is being used as an entry point, likely because it's cheaper and easier than building an on-ramp or different access point to an entirely different kind of community and/or doesn't interfere with what they have going on on Exit 1. In March, I believe, there was a meeting in regards to rezoning of Flatley property from Park Industrial to Residential. That application was tabled mostly due to the fact that John Flatley was not able to produce a master plan for all the land they own on this hill. I ask that that same courtesy is bestowed upon this property. Ward Eight residents are not blind to the fact that Flatley reserves the right to build upon the land they purchased. However, a lot has changed in Nashua since Flatley bought this stretch of property, and I believe that all Nashua residents deserve to know what Flat, deserve to have Flatley produce a master plan for all their undeveloped property before they displace another leaf, since everything they build on this hill will affect traffic on Exits 1 and 4. Perhaps with this, we will learn that they hope to build an even larger gated, single-family community with pool, clubhouse, and parking lot for the residents, to which I argue that they should provide those residents with their own access point rather than using our neighborhood as a cheaper solution to their end goal. It's unlikely that Flatley won't try to build off of this development, so I'm asking you to reject this proposal. In doing so, you will keep our roads quiet and safe for all the current families on Long Hill, and you will be holding John Flatley responsible for being more forthcoming about their plans of their undeveloped property. Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nick Lizlota. I live at 6 Dustin Drive, which is a road that intersects with Shadow Brook. And I would like you to, I'm opposed to this development as it's proposed, okay? Flatley owns the land, they're gonna build something. We've talked about the single egress and egress, egress and ingress at Shadow Brook and Spindelwick. That's a big concern. I mean, Shadow Brook is about a thousand-foot road. It ends at Byron. Byron is a very short street that has a hill that gets icy in the wintertime, has a school bus stop, has, you know, all kinds of issues there. And now we're gonna be adding another 58 units of traffic there, which is probably about 100 cars a day, okay, each way, all right? The speed study that was done, the bottom of Timberline basically was 9,100 over a course of a week, which averages about 1,300 a day. That serves about 600 or so houses in that area. So that's about two, two-plus trips a day each way, okay? Just do that math and add that in. And, you know, we're adding a lot of traffic there. Okay, the bigger concern I have, well, and one more concern about traffic, the bottom of Timberline, as we said, has been falling apart, it's been repaved, it's not wide enough, okay? There's, there's a single lane coming down, and there's a small turning lane. And to get to that left turning lane, you'll back up the traffic all the way up the hill, okay? And so anybody who wants to try to make a right can't, you know, so, you know, to get onto the highway or something along those lines. The bigger concern I have is related to the plan itself. Flatley owns nine parcels, okay? There's three of them are zoned R40. Six of them are zoned R18. And, you know, the city documents talk about average lot size. No, minimum lot size. In R18, the minimum lot size is 18,000 square feet. And in R40, it's 40,000 square feet. Some of these, none of these approach those. Most of these are about 1300, 13,000 square feet, which is about a third of an acre, okay? The houses on Kyle, Dustin, Shadow Brook, Spindelwick are basically R18, and they're 18,000 or so square feet, totally changing the character of the neighborhood, totally changing the character of the type of houses. These houses are small. The, the city also specifies the minimum frontage. Minimum frontage on an R40 is 120 feet. Minimum frontage on an R18 is 100 feet. These are 80 and 90. Some of them as small as 60, okay? This plan should be rejected outright because of that. This is not meeting the requirements, the density requirements of what the zoning plans are. Flatley's treating this as one big parcel. It's not. It's got, you know, have they combined it in the zoning board into something? And have they rezoned it as R18? It's not really, because they'll rezon it as R13 if you're making lot sizes of 13,000 square feet. So that's my concern. There's other issues. Obviously, they talk about water and sewer coming in from Spindel, from Spindelwick. We had a serious pressure problem for almost 30 years on the hill. I had a pressure pump because of where we were. In 2018, I think it was, Penashaw finally solved that, so now we finally have adequate pressure. Now they're gonna add 58 more houses here fed from that same pump station, basically, and we're gonna end up having another problem that's gonna take 25 more years to solve. So I think there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed before this thing basically can be even considered, no less approved. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Just a point of clarification, if folks have questions about lot lines and sizes, just understand this is specifically a conservation subdivision. And a lot of those zoning setbacks and requirements you're talking about, those are not specific to conservation subdivisions. But the folks can explain that further for you. But I just want to kind of make sure everybody understands what's being proposed isn't, isn't consistent with a single lot, if I can put it right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and fellow board members. My name is Mark Hutchins. My wife and I live at 6 Spindelwick Drive. We've been residents of Nashville since 1996. I also, with my neighbors, and I'm speaking out against this, this development as is currently planned. A couple of concerns that we do have, the traffic has been mentioned several times, sorry, but consider this is like a 20% increase in traffic to a neighborhood that's already pretty full with young families, okay? So there is a lot of traffic there. Should, should this be carried forward, don't think of it part of Green Hills. It's a modification to the Long Hill neighborhood. The way it's proposed right now, it's not attached to the Gateway Hills or anything down to the south. So it's kind of written wrong in that respect. It's really a modification to the Long Hill neighborhood. And should Flatley wish to continue this, I do also echo my neighbors' recommendations that they consider going south. Mr. Deacon had a great, great note relative to emergency access for emergency crews with a, with a key gateway or something like that that first responders can get through. But frankly, keeping it part of the Gateway Hills would mean then keeping it the egress and ingress south towards the rest of the Flatley properties. The, the other question I have is, has an impact been assessed on the impact to the school districts for this side of development? There is a, we're all in this neighborhood with a... There is a, we're all in the, in this neighborhood, we're in a bicentennial school district. Very, very pleased to be in this school district. It's, it's why my wife and I bought our house here in ninety-six. Public schools all the way throughout and supporting Nashua. But also to understand not just the utility infrastructure, but what are the other impacts? And make sure that they're properly addressed, and so that the, the residents of this area know what's gonna be happening. No further comment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Come on up. What a night. Can't believe I shaved before I got here. My name's Ben Lyons. I live at thirty-seven Spindelwick. I'm a townie. I was born at St. Joe's in seventy-seven. I know my way around town. Speeding up through Long Hill, as I've always known it, is nothing new. Shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody here. There's one stop sign on Spindelwick, and that's at seventeen Spindelwick. So between seventeen and ninety-two, there is nothing. It was a drag strip back in the nineties, I'm afraid to say. I know from firsthand experience. But there is no way that people are going twenty-five down Spindelwick. There's no way. Everyone's already talked about Timberline, but the one glaring omission is if you look at East Dunstable and all the streets that access our neighborhood, there are eleven streets that use Timberline. If you think they're gonna go all the way out of the way to go down Shelley or Browning, you're out of your mind, especially if it's winter. There's just no way. I don't understand how fire trucks can scream up Spindelwick already. Just worried about my kids and riding bikes, playing street hockey. There's, there's far too many cars that go up and down Spindelwick that probably should have numbers on the side of their car. I, I really don't wanna reiterate everything that everyone's already said, so adding another sixty, almost sixty, I should say, houses to our neighborhood on the eleven streets that we already use, and especially on mine, where there's just, again, that one street sign versus having to zigzag through Shadow Brook, down Byron, everything. My street will definitely become a drag strip and is a very dangerous hazard. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Adam Galonsky. I live at seventeen Shadow Brook, which is two houses away from this proposed intersection. I have a whole bunch of stuff that I wanted to say, which has already been said. So mostly, I wanna say that I'm a relatively new resident. I moved down here from living in Concord for a long time, and just a year and a half ago into this neighborhood because my lady friend and I wanna retire here, and it's a quiet street. There's like twenty houses on it. And now it's gonna be a, a throughway, because let's be real. Everybody in this neighborhood is gonna come out, go straight across Spindelwick, down Shadow Brook, Byron, Timberline. That's the, that's the shortest distance between those two points. So that's the way people are gonna go. Not thrilled about that. As some of my neighbors have already mentioned, dogs and, and, and just walking is, is kinda dangerous on some of these streets. I don't know how we can look at this map and, and, and agree that these homes are roughly the same as the ones that are already in the neighborhood. They are smaller. The lots are smaller. And they're building a clubhouse, so to suggest that this isn't going to be some sort of rental or condo association is absurd. They know what they're doing. They just don't wanna say it out loud yet, because then everybody will be up in arms. I lived in a condo association for twenty years, so I, I know the deal, and that's what this is. That is totally different character of a neighborhood from what we already have. So you're talking about changing the whole character of the neighborhood. And lastly, I'll agree with the last few people who propose accessing the neighborhood from the south and using the Shadow Brook entrance as a emergency access. That was something we talked about, and we, it, it's been mischaracterized. The, the, the representatives from Flatley have said, "Well, we don't want commercial vehicles going through your neighborhood." That's never what we wanted. We wanted it accessed from the south, and the north end, emergency access only. That's all we've ever said. We've never said, "Oh, we want it open all the way through so people can just cut through." That's never what we advocated for. I think that's all I needed to say. Thank you very much. Good luck with this.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter Silva, eighteen Maysfield Road. I kinda just wanna expand a little bit on what the last gentleman just said was my concern. I didn't realize till tonight that these were fifteen hundred square foot houses. The people who live in Long Hill, like kind of a butt Long Hill, their garages are fifteen hundred square feet. So this is definitely gonna diminish the property value to add those, you know, along with the traffic things they all said about. But the, the other thing was, I didn't know till tonight that they, they're gonna be rental properties. That's what they're gonna be. They're gonna be like condos, single-family condos or detached condos, whatever you call it. That is nothing like the character of Long Hill Estates and the way it was designed. So I'm not sure if the board knew about that, but that's what this is gonna be. And I'm not sure how the traffic study's done. I'd like to see what that is, you know, technically how it's done. Like, I, I never saw one of those boxes with the, you drive over with the, takes the counts or any, I never saw one of those. So I don't know how they did it. But the whole thing has been shady from the start. And again, the big thing I always said tonight is the master plan. When does it end? And how does it end? And if they're gonna use, basically, that's what it is. They're gonna use our valued properties that we paid big money for to access this rental property, along with affordable housing, quote unquote. So that's all I really had to say. I, I don't think they're being upfront. Well, they're not. But I would hope that the people that we pay taxes to would look out for our best interest. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, Cindy Deller, twenty-three Bracketwood Drive. I'm not directly involved where all the traffic would go, because my street is a little bit in the middle, but being in a neighborhood, I feel it still impacts that. But I have one question. Is it necessary to have a master plan to present to the planning board before action is taken on a community of this nature? You told me I could ask questions.
Yeah, yeah. We'll address that with the applicant and with staff, 'cause it's been brought up a couple of times, but...
Not the fact that they haven't presented one. I wanna know, in general, is a master plan required when an organization brings forth a project to the planning board?
I would just say, in my experience on the board, I've been here about ten years, maybe a little bit longer. We've had many subdivisions roughly of this size, particularly conservation subdivisions that don't have a master plan.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I could tell you.
Sorry, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? The audience here? I don't know if there's somebody online, maybe. We can see if there's anybody listening in.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
All right, Peter Proventer, fifty-two Spindelwick Drive. I put my concerns and thoughts into chat, and other people did as well. So it's basically, I'm just echoing what's, what's already been said. But I also agree that this is just a, kind of a slick way of getting access into our neighborhoods so they don't have to go through the south entrance. This development has nothing to do with the established neighborhood. It's been here for, what, thirty-five years? So in my eyes, there is, we're looking, we're comparing apples and oranges right now as far as the type of home they wanna put up. It's a private resi, it's a private condo association where we can't access, it's, they're private roads. So it just, it just doesn't add up. So I'm hoping that everybody takes a step back before anything drastic is done moving forward, because it definitely needs to be a lot more research done, in my humble opinion. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I see Steve Dukren has his hand raised.
Okay.
Yes, hello, Mr. Chair. Good to see you guys.
Hello.
Mr. Bali, Mr. Ballinger, Steve Dukren, forty-two Spindelwick Drive. I went to both the neighborhood meetings. And the second one, where traffic was mainly discussed, Mr. Claude took copious notes. And he suggested, even though the development wasn't going to generate a whole lot of traffic, that they were interested in solving some of the neighborhood issues. Particularly those issues that exist at intersection of East Dunstable Road and Timberline Drive. And I heard tonight that it was mentioned, and we haven't seen the traffic report, and the old man is correct. It should've been, you know, if it was prepared that far back, it should've been shared with the neighborhood. At least, you know, we would have had the opportunity to, to review it and make our comments. But anyway, it, it was said outside that the side distance at the, that intersection is adequate. And anyone driving that knows that's not correct. No, it may, maybe enough for if the vehicles on East Dunstable Road were traveling at the speed limit, but no one does. And, and the reason is, people on East Dunstable Road are always trying to be that traffic signal. You know, you see that yellow is coming on, the green is on, and you want to make it. So that makes it awfully dangerous, and I think it was the old man who mentioned, the left turns are dangerous. You just have to close your eyes sometimes to make it. So we brought up all of, all of those issues, including the narrow right turn lane. The radius there is very tight, and people have to swing out to, to make that. And, and, and you can't have two full lanes at the same time. That's why you have that significant backup during the, the rush hours, especially in the mornings, trying to get out of there. So that, that should've been at least addressed, and I think as suggested, and as a promise, they would've been able to work with the city and, and come with a solution. And the other thing that was mentioned in that location is, there are no sidewalks connecting East Dunstable Road with the neighborhood. And you see people walking right there where cars are traveling. And it, it would've been good to at least make that connection. A short section of sidewalk between East Dunstable Road and Kelly Drive, which is the first intersection on Timberline. So anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention. The other thing is, it'd be interesting to see what the, the city traffic engineer comment letter is that was mentioned. You know, think that, that the fee was being collected. What is the amount that fee is, and what is that gonna be used for? You know, if that is gonna be used for mitigating any, any impacts, even though the, the development is generating a, a lower number of traffic. I, I heard the numbers. Again, I wasn't clear about what is, were, they, they seem to be very low. I, I heard some like thirty vehicles in, in the evening peak for fifty-eight homes. I, I'm not sure if that's the right number. And I'd like to find what the, the daily traffic is as well, what is generated, you know, for twenty-four hour from this, from this development. The other thing I would like to ask is, the, why is Flatley so interested in owning the clubhouse and possibly the clubhouse parcel number sixty-one? The vague answers about ownership and, and selling up the subdivision lots, that, that, to me, is worrisome about wanting to make a future connection with industrial, commercial area to the south. So I think, you know, all the discussion about the master plan and so on, that, those are very relevant. And so what is the future of this, this subdivision? So those are the things I wanted to see if you can get some answers for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay. All right. So anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? I don't hear anybody. All right, so at this point, I will give the opportunity to the applicant to address some of the issues that have been brought up by the public comment. I assume you have notes.
I do have some notes, and bear with me, Mr. Chairman, as I sometimes have trouble reading even my own writing, so. I guess just to speak to the, to the plan and, you know, a lot of the, or, I guess I'll start by saying, you know, some, what I have taken a lot of notes of is a lot of the concerns that are raised are existing conditions that are off-site. And, you know, policing speeds and things of that nature are not something that my client has control over necessarily off-site. And that's an enforcement issue. It sounds like it's been going on for a long time, and, and it seems like, you know, attention should maybe be put in a different direction relative to solving those problems. Calling the city police department, getting some patrol, you know, something of that nature. The development that we have before you is a conservation subdivision. And it's a conservation subdivision for a reason, so that we can provide buffering to the neighborhood that's asked for buffering. If they wanna see lot sizes of forty thousand square feet and eighteen thousand square feet, they will see them right up against the back of their lots. That was the first concept. So this plan has been made...
Go ahead, keep going.
Okay.
Sorry. This plan, this plan has been revised, you know, over the course, and I said, of, of a few years, to try to balance many of the comments that we've received. It's a fifty-eight lot subdivision. The property supports a much higher density, but it's not something that's being sought, but it could by right. And so we are being sensitive. There's no, nobody that's taking any, you know, acknowledgement of that. This is a reasonable development of fifty acres. That provides significant buffering that doesn't, by regulation, need to be provided, but it is. And yes, it's being set up as a private development. What does that mean? Well, it just so happens to mean that it's not gonna be burdensome to the city, like other conservation developments that we've done, where these have been public roads that ultimately get taken over by the city, plowed by the city, maintained by the city. It's the same, it could be, but that's not what Mr. Flatley has done on any of his developments. He, he likes to have, he likes to control the setting and the environment and provide the amenities for people that decide to live in communities that he builds. Is it gonna be rental or for sale? Who knows? Nobody knows what the market's going to be, but the reality is, it could be a blend, no different than any other development we've done, where developers will build. And if they can't sell something due to market conditions, they might rent it. But it doesn't mean that you can't have a private development with site amenities and a condo association and homeowners fees and provide an environment that's different than surrounding communities. All of the concerns that were raised tonight don't trigger a violation of any city ordinance or city code. We meet them all. Every design requirement, we meet. Every setback requirement, we meet. We exceed, actually, by a great distance in many, many situations. We exceed these requirements in part because we have heard the community. I have myself, unfortunately, due to some conflicts, was not able to attend the neighborhood meeting. But I, I heard from, you know, my client and, and other professionals that were there of the concerns, and we did incorporate them into the plans. We haven't been before this board with this plan because we've been addressing other items that may not be required technically based on the city's criteria, but we knew they would be of great interest to this community. Could easily be standing here tonight, not presenting a traffic report and not having a traffic engineer here. I don't think that would be something I would recommend, but, you know, because of the concerns that have been raised. But it, but based on the regulations that, you know, we could've started that way. We've gone, we, meaning my client, has gone, you know, taken the extra steps to make sure that we're here tonight with some answers. So the lot sizes, the frontages, we can provide all those, but you lose the buffer. And that's, you know, many people wanted separation and wanted to still have, you know, that feeling out their backyard. So we, we increased that distance. So we increased that distance. You know, the entry point is in an area where there's an existing right-of-way. And if you do the research, it's pretty obvious that this northern section of the property, the plan was to ultimately kind of continue that same development back then. That's why there's a right-of-way to this property. That's why we're utilizing that right-of-way. To connect down to Dozer Road down by Tara Heights, which is, you know, probably at least a few thousand feet away, isn't reasonable. You know, all the master plan references are a function of that part of the property down there. And there are no requirements for master plans. And I will tell you personally, I don't particularly like master plans because I've done them for developments just like this. And you know what we spend most of our time doing? Changing them. Because what we're not good at is guessing what somebody wants, guessing what the next development is, guessing how things are going to happen over time. As planning board members who volunteer your time, you see that over time. Things change. On the smallest of lots, even the one lot, lot line adjustment that was before you. I mean, everything is a function of the market and what somebody's looking for. We've spent years changing master plans on another Flatley project in a community where it was required. And it's not productive. And that, we've had those conversations with staff, you know, we haven't ignored the concerns. We've tried to address those. But those comments are related to a different part of this site that, in my opinion, that is commercial and industrial in nature and really belongs, you know, the connection belongs down to Spitbrook Road. We're not concerned about the traffic going out to Spitbrook Road, certainly, you know, with, you know, this project. This traffic belongs going into the residential development. It's a consistent development. It's the same type of homes. There's homes on Spindelwick and other of those side roads that are the same size that we're proposing. This is a consistent development. It shouldn't matter whether it's a rental or for sale. There's an acute need for housing in the city and in New Hampshire and in New England, both rentals and for sale. And I think that's clearly something the city's been trying to address through their adoption of the inclusionary housing regulations that we've embraced with this project. You know, the, we submitted a traffic study, the city engineer has reviewed the traffic study. There's no revisions, no off-site improvements requested. There's nothing being asked of this project based on the city's review, other than a donation into a fund, which is probably intended to make improvements off-site, similar to any other development that we've been doing in recent years in the city, where there's a contribution that's typically made by a development so that it can be put into a fund and appropriately allocated by the professionals that are employed by the city. The engineering review raised no issues with this, no, and I say it raised a number of comments. I think Mr. Mendola did a great job reviewing the plans. He's very thorough. We have no issues with any of his comments. We've addressed many of them already. All of the stormwater for this project flows to the west, doesn't go anywhere near the development. This project, if we talk about the topography, is actually tucked, you know, kind of over the hill. We haven't even talked, the topography falls to the west towards the highway. So there's even a topographic advantage to that buffer in the location. Yes, the traffic's going to go, you know, through that area, but that's the reason we did the traffic report. Nothing from the professionals suggests that we need to make any modifications to anything Fire, they haven't technically signed off on the project, but they gave us four comments, I believe. We're working with them still to address street names. We did submit a handful, and unfortunately, we didn't hit a home run on those, which is pretty common. So we're working on, still selecting some street names. They wanted the emergency access road, which is a connection from this cul-de-sac here, this cul-de-sac here, over close to the entrance. They wanted that to be twenty feet wide instead of, I believe it was designed to be sixteen. We have no issues with that. They did not want there to be any gates. We have no issues with that. And as Mr. Walker stated, we plan on utilizing that portion as a, as a part of a pedestrian walk as well. They wanted two hydrants to be added along the municipal water line. No issues with that. And they wanted us to make a, do an apparatus overlay onto that emergency access section. We have no issues with that. The cul-de-sacs are designed to meet city specs. The roads are designed to meet city standards, so they're twenty-eight feet in width. They're nice wide roads. We have no issues with any of those concerns. I mean, I'd be happy to walk right through the engineering review and any of the other reviews. We meet all the requirements. We're asking for two waivers as it pertains to plan preparation, and that's it. Obviously, people are adverse to change, but there is a need for housing and it needs to be addressed. And we think this is a great plan, that is a fair proposal. We're proposing almost half of what the density could be on this project, as I stated earlier. It's reasonable. I'm not suggesting that my client wants to do that. It's pretty obvious that he wants to be, in my opinion, reasonable with this proposal. But I want to give Mr. Plourd an opportunity to address the traffic questions and concerns because those were primarily the comments. But this is going to be compatible with the neighborhood, especially when you consider the buffering. People are going to live here. It's single-family detached homes. They have their own yards. They have sidewalks. They're going to be part of the community. Yes, there's going to be some amenities on this site that are going to be open to them. They get to choose whether they want to move here or move into the neighborhood next door. As Mr. Walker said, they've never, the Flatley Company has never stopped neighbors from utilizing the trails and some of the amenities on-site in the past. And I suspect that won't change as long as things, you know, keep being utilized in a responsible manner. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll let Mr. Plourd come up, but certainly happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we hear from Mr. Plourd and then the board has some questions for the applicant, and we can move into that.
Thank you. To address some of the questions that were brought up or statements, there was another speed study that was done by the police department. We don't have that data, however, doesn't contradict what we said. On Timberline, I said that cars are going faster than the posted speed limit. On Spindelwick, they are not. That's what I had said. And that's because that there were more on-street parking along Spindelwick than there were on Timberline. And also on Timberline that there's the downhill grade coming down. So I don't contradict at all what Alderman Tebow said. Unfortunately, he thinks I said something different, which we're consistently saying the same thing. People are going faster on Timberline. The other thing was a couple of people had mentioned about commitments to improvements along this corridor. Boy, I'm telling you, we tried. We tried with the double-yellow centerline. We tried with the always-stop control. We tried with all these different measures, but we, like I said earlier, we just can't arbitrarily put up any kind of traffic control, striping, signs, anything like that. We can't just put up a traffic signal wherever we want. We can't put up a roundabout wherever we want. We have to come up with something. And based on standard traffic engineering practice, at this level of traffic volumes and with a limitation of not putting in a double-yellow centerline, and the city is, DPW is opposed to putting in speed bumps, the next option is enforcement. And that's based on ITE methodologies, that's based on other standard engineering practice. As far as sidewalks are concerned, we didn't look at that at all. That wasn't part of our evaluation. We don't know if there's enough right-of-way. We don't know what would happen to the width of the roadways. I don't know. I honestly don't know. But I think that that's one of the reasons why that this fund is put together, the contribution fund, to be able to consider different types of improvements, whether they're to the roadways, for vehicular traffic, or for non-motorized traffic. We did submit our traffic study back the end of April. We received an email yesterday from Mr. Husband. So it's not like that this traffic study was sitting around collecting dust. The city was reviewing it. Before we wanted to be able to share anything with the public, we needed to make sure that the city officials who were reviewing this traffic study were okay with it before it hit the light of day. That's the process. The process is that you prepare a traffic study, you submit it to the city or a town, depending on the jurisdiction, the DOT as well, but not in this case. But, so we went through the proper channels. That traffic study, once it's submitted, is public information. But we did not want to share that until we got the feedback from the city, because that's the proper process. As far as sharing the traffic study, I have absolutely no problem with that, now that we've received the feedback from Wayne Husband. Whether it was good or bad, at least he was able to review it and he was able to share his comments. That's the process. If people don't like the process, I'm sorry, that's not up to me to change. But as far as providing the information, it's all documented. It has been reviewed by the city traffic superintendent. The comments that he has are, there are no major changes to level of service at any of the study area intersections. An always-stop warrant was performed at four intersections. None of the warrants in MUTCD were met. A double-yellow centerline was suggested along Timberline Drive. Based on the city's history painting double-yellow lines in residential neighborhoods, it is not supported by Public Works. Speed bumps were suggested by some residents. Public Works discontinued installing speed bumps several years ago. And then it talks about the traffic volumes, and then it comes up with an equation of, based on the peak hour, the highest peak hour, whether it was the morning or the evening, and applying a rate to that to be able to get the dollar amount. So, and he, Mr. Husband concludes, we have no further comments relative to traffic at this time. So as far as coming up with different types of improvements, we tried. We tried, but we just can't put in always-stop wherever we want. We, if signs, are people going to obey by signs? I was thinking striping might be a great idea, because then you know where your edge of travel is on your left side. Right now, you have that white edge line to know where your right side is. But the left side, as Mr. Husband said, that it's, they don't support it. Public Works does not support the centerlines in neighborhoods. Because, here's the other thing too, is that as far as the edge line and the shoulder out there, if that is being used for sidewalks, for pedestrian travel, and maybe bicycles, then putting in the double-yellow centerline is going to shrink that width. And that's not a good thing. We certainly don't want to cause any unnecessary unsafe conditions for people. That's, that's not the purpose of this development. That's not the purpose of the existing neighbors. They don't want to have an unsafe situation, so I'm not going to take away their shoulders. But like I said, I don't know if sidewalks could be constructed in the area. I don't know about the right-of-way. I don't know about drainage. I don't know about a lot of different things as far as that aspect, because that was not part of a request of us made during the neighborhood meeting in February. It was really all about the vehicular traffic and the safety of the vehicles up and down that corridor. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Could you just comment real quick? There was a couple of questions about the right-hand turnpocket up or Timberline.
Sure. So we have absolutely no problem extending that back to Kelly. That's not a problem at all. You know, but just based on our observations, based on the intersection analyses, it was not showing that it was warranted. But if, if that's what the city wants, we have no reason for restriping that to extend the two-lane approach on Timberline to East Dunstable. You know, I mean, obviously, you want to make sure that it tapers back before it gets to Kelly, but that's not a problem at all.
Looking at that, that looked like that was possible, in your opinion?
Well, what may have to happen is that the double-yellow centerline might have to shift a little bit down to the south side to be able to provide more width. But it's really just striping. That's all that it is. It's not changing the pavement width, it's just changing around the striping.
Okay. Anybody, did you want to make any other rebuttal remarks before we get into questions? Sorry, the public period is closed at this point. We're now in the board's discussion on the rebuttal. At this point, then, I'll go ahead and open up to the board for questions at this point. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, there was a few issues that were raised that I just wanted the applicant to address that I didn't hear addressed quite yet. One was concerns about safety at that intersection. I know the study includes some crash data, and so maybe Mr. Plourd could speak to that. And I wanted to hear from the applicant about sewer capacity and water. There's a, you know, a note about water pressure, and maybe that's been resolved. But I just wanted to know if there'd been coordination with Penachuk Water Works on the water? And also have there been calculations on the sewer capacity? Because the pump is going to pump to the city's gravity sewer system on these streets, and obviously, we need assurance that that's, there's sufficient capacity for that.
Hey, I'm Kevin Walker. I'm just going to address the Penachuk part, and I'll flip it over to Chad and Jason for the rest. But I spoke with Penachuk way at the very beginning of this, a couple of years back, and they ran some quick pressure and flow numbers. And they didn't see any issues for, well, we had a different layout back then. Basically, the entire site will have enough pressure and water capacity. And he said, once everything's fully designed, which it is now, maybe the house at the end of, that's the highest house. He said, he wants to run a calculation on that to see if those houses might need a booster. Other than that, my discussion with him, like I said, was probably a year and a half, couple of years back. Penachuk didn't seem to have any issue with it.
Okay.
Thank you. Chad Brandon again with Fieldstone.
Hold on, Michael. Close it.
I heard. Chad Brandon again with Fieldstone Land Consultants. Just to follow up on the Penachuk question too, back in February, we submitted a complete plan set to Penachuk for review. And in conversations with them, they didn't appear to have any issues with water. And I just confirmed that, you know, they said worst case, there might need to be a booster for one of the homes at the end of the cul-de-sac. As it relates to the sewer, we did submit a sewer flow capacity calculation back in February that was reviewed, and there were no issues with that analysis, so that was addressed. I know that was something that staff had mentioned during one of our preliminary reviews, so we did supply that with our submission as well. And so I'll hand the floor over to the traffic consultant to address the traffic question. Thank you.
Hi, Jason Plourd, VHB. As far as the crash data is concerned, we did request crash data at our five intersections that we looked at. So that was East Dunstable, Timberline, Timberline, Spindelwick, Byron, Shadowbrook, Spindelwick, Shadowbrook, and East Dunstable, Harris. And based on the data that we were provided from the Nashville Police Department between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one, there were a total of twenty-nine calls and six crash reports at those five intersections. Of those reported crashes, four of the incidents occurred at the signalized intersection of East Dunstable Road and Harris Road. Two of the incidents occurred within the neighborhood east of East Dunstable Road. Zero occurred at Timberline and East Dunstable. I'm not saying that it's not a safety concern. I'm saying based on the police data, there is not a reported crash history at that intersection. Within the last three years, two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant?
I guess, I guess the main question, I'm going to throw it out there, because, I mean, I need to understand the sort of overall impact is just, the function of the development, if it did exit to the south, what does that mean to the development? Is it practical? Is it still functional? Does it, you know, I mean, and I'm pretty familiar with the development to the south, obviously, having been here ten years and kind of watched it.
So it's, it's not practical, practical really. Again, it's, it's 2,500, if not more, feet further to the south. And despite, you know, the stuff you've heard tonight, our goal is to separate this from the industrial stuff to the south. And part of that is, is this, is there going to be an issue drainage-wise? Well, obviously, not at all flows towards the highway. Is there going to be an impact traffic-wise? There are 1,300 or something homes, maybe 850 in that general area. We're adding 50, or 56, or whatever it is. So, just numbers-wise, we're not adding a lot. But, you know, traffic was a big concern with the neighborhood meetings. You know, these are neighborhood meetings that, that we, you know, we were asked to have, we, we've had past neighborhood meetings, years passed. Matt Sullivan asked us to have a, have a meeting, so we had another meeting. And then we had a follow-up meeting. None of these are required. You know, we're not doing this to push stuff down people's throats. You know, like, like Chad mentioned, this could be 80-something lots. It doesn't make sense. We don't, we don't want to cut all the trees down. People don't want the trees cut down. We're not putting in a conventional development and ripping all the trees down. We're going to try to do this the best we can, you know, even if we're not getting 80 lots out of it, you know? And, and that, that's our approach. And, and the fact that I have to sit here and listen to, we're not listening to the neighbors, and we're not doing this, we're not doing that, you know, it's nonsense, frankly. You know, we, we don't have to have these neighborhood meetings, but we do. And, and we want to do things in a certain order, which we've done. So, I guess, I guess I'll turn it over to Chad. He wants to touch on, on something there. But as far as the, the traffic goes, the main reason for coming out this way, aside from it being 2,500 feet away, is we want to separate the two types of development. Thanks.
I would also say, Mr. Chairman, just as a, a professional engineer designing something for safety, I don't think a 2,500-foot extension down to innovative way would be a great way for 58 people to travel home. That's essentially a dead-end road with an emergency connection for emergency response vehicles. But this is a much safer layout, tying into an adjacent neighborhood. And that, again, is what that right-of-way is intended for, for access. It's intended for access to a compatible development, which we would, we believe we are. And I don't think that there's any reason to not think that when you consider, you know, the density that we're proposing. There's, you know, the layout of the streets was done as such in working with, you know, city departments, the fire department, making sure we have that loop system and some redundancy. We've done developments in the city where the fire department really doesn't like long stretches of dead-end road, and they've made us do boulevard designs in situations that are just like, you know, what would be, I mean, you couldn't possibly do it for 2,500 feet, but that's the reason that they've required that in other locations. And it was actually something that they initially asked us...
Make sure you grab the mic.
I'm sorry, trying to beat, trying to beat the... Something that they initially asked us to consider in this stretch here. Can you boulevard that whole thing down to the intersection here? And we worked with them closely to, to do this emergency access here and tie in so that we didn't have to boulevard that. But I can guarantee you that if we were going to go to the south, 25 to, you know, 3,000 feet away, they would want two roads. Basically, it's essentially what they're asking for, was a boulevard break. And it's not, it's not feasible, it's not reasonable, and it's not warranted by, you know, the, the, you know, the regulations, at least from our standpoint and understanding. But, thank you.
Could, while you're up, can you just explain to me a little bit the parcels to the, I'll call it plans out there? What, what's the zoning of those? There was a comment about, you know, a development, obviously, planned south of this. I guess it is just an actual south too. You know, would that end up connecting over to the same street network again?
Oh, the planned south? No, there's restrictions on the southern portion of this property. So first of all, this, there's a section here that's not owned by the John Flatley Company. There's old, like, really old, small lots through there. Paper streets, I think Dewey Ave. and Ashmont Street are paper streets with, with lots. So there's a disconnect, and you can see it here. This land here is, on this side, this is that finger, that if you can, there's a match line here that extends down. So this is a narrow stretch here, and these lots are not owned by the John Flatley Company. Where it opens back up down in this area here, which is, you know, down in here, if you will, there's a large piece of undeveloped property through there that is not zoned R40. I believe that's zoned industrial, in fact, if I'm not mistaken. But that property has restrictions on it that extend from the residential site. And I think it's, is it a 300-foot setback? Just...
So just, just...
But there's restrictions.
Get close to what, what I'm trying to get at is, is there, the way that the property is owned and zoned right now, any further possible residential development to the south?
There's no plans for residential development to the south. It's...
So the top of Gateway Hills right now is essentially the top of the residential zoning?
Where Tara Heights ends, everything to the north of that is zoned, I believe, Park Industrial, if I'm not mistaken. There's no plans to do any residential that I'm aware of, and I've been working on this site for over 10 years, to do any residential through there. That's the section that kind of everybody's been talking about, you know, maybe some form of master planning. We were before the zoning board, and we were going forward with a zoning change to try to do residential on the area just south of Tara Heights Phase 1, which is off of Research Drive. That was the last residential proposal. And it's, it's essentially an area that's tucked between 1 and 200 Digital Drive and, and Tara Heights. So it's, it's a, it's a kind of a, an undeveloped portion of land that we thought would be reasonable for residential development, just because it is getting closer to the, you know, the residential area through there, and there isn't, there is a housing need. And frankly, there's some vacancy, I believe, in, you know, 100 through 300 right now because of, you know, what's been going on in the, you know, last couple of years. So it doesn't make sense to do large-scale research and development buildings, which is what we were considering in that spot prior to that. But, yeah, so that area you're talking about, it's, it's zoned completely different. And that's why we've always shown this site on the northern portion as being a residential, single-family detached for a long, you know, a long time. And, you know, it's, it's, it, so anybody who, who says, you know, they're going to extend this and do residential, and that's not the plan. And, you know, I try not to put a lot of energy in that direction, because that's not what we're proposing either. And if it was proposed, which it, you know, won't be, we would land back before this board, and we'd be talking about, you know, a different project at that point, and, and different concerns, and we'd be going through a different process with, with that development. This is the plan we're proposing. We're not suggesting that there's going to be a connection into any additional residential lots. In fact, I believe I just presented the contrary.
So just to...
Mr. Varley?
Yeah. Yeah, to clarify that point, and this is either for you, Mr. Brandon, or for staff. So given that that, the parcel between Tara Heights and this development is, is Park Industrial, that would require a zoning change for you to even consider residential use there? Would that be a Board of Aldermen requirement to change that from, from Park Industrial to some other residential zone? And I'd, I'd, I'd put that to staff too.
Yeah, if they're going to have the property rezoned, it would have to go through the Board of Aldermen. I mean, the other option would be to ask for a variance, and then they'd have to go through the zoning board.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions by the board? Okay. All right. At this point, I'm not hearing any other questions by the board for the applicant or staff. So I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, so.
All right. So we're moving into the meeting portion of the, the case here. So obviously, quite a few things to consider. I'm just going to give a couple of my own comments here to start the discussion. With regard to the, the development itself, you know, I'm, I'm just going to go straight to the city's newest master plan. You know, this type of housing, this size, and this layout is, is in my opinion, very consistent with the master plan. And I was specific in asking some of my questions about the size, because our master plan was pretty specific about affordability of single-family homes in the city of Nashville, specifically that we, you know, we have a pretty good inventory of larger homes and a very short and lacking inventory of homes that are, you know, that anybody starting or younger could potentially get into. So, so, you know, my two cents is the type of development is pretty consistent with the master plan, and I would, and, and as is the concept of the conservation subdivision with the buffers and the additional amenities. So I don't, maybe we can focus discussion around the concept before we get to the sort of impacts? Does anybody want to comment on their thoughts about the, the concept of the subdivision? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess first, I just wanted to speak briefly to the role of this board. And, and this is an issue that I think comes up frequently, you know, particularly if there's, there's a lot of, you know, public concern about a particular project. And, you know, Alderman Tebow had mentioned, you know, he asked us to, to listen to the abutters, which obviously we've done, and, and I would argue that the applicant, at least in some respects, has, has listened to the abutters as well. But ultimately, I mean, this is not a political body. So, you know, we don't review issues the way that the Board of Aldermen would. We are constrained by, you know, what the standards are in the, in the city zoning ordinances. And so our task is to, A, ensure that the application before us meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinances, and then B, to the extent that, you know, abutters are, are raising issues that we think are, are reasonable concerns, to do our best to try to work with the applicant to address those. But understanding and appreciating the, the concerns that have been expressed tonight, you know, the, the, an opposition to a plan by itself, you know, at least in, in my humble opinion, is, is not, you know, a basis for not approving a plan. We take into consideration the issues that all of you have raised about, you know, you know, safety concerns in terms of speeding, about the, the traffic impacts on the neighborhood with the access point, about, you know, potential future development, about the nature of the development and whether it's, it's a good fit with the, the existing neighborhood. But ultimately, we, you know, for us to consider the merits of the plan, we have to look at, is there something about the plan that does not justify approval under the zoning ordinance? And that's ultimately the, the standard we're governed by. And, and so I just wanted to express that, because I, I do think, you know, I, I don't want abutters to, to leave this meeting thinking that, you know, the board hasn't listened to your concerns and isn't taking those into account, you know, based on what, whatever decision we ultimately make. That, that's not the case. But, but, you know, I do want everyone to appreciate that, that this board serves a particular role that is, that is different than a political body. So with all that said, I, I agree with Mr. Chair in terms of the, the sort of the, the purpose this, this serves in relation to the master plan. And in, in particular, I, I guess the, the point about ownership versus rental, you know, I don't, if, if the applicant were to decide that these were to be rental units, I don't view that as, as inconsistent with, you know, the abutting residential uses. And clearly, there's a need for both rental and single-family houses, and that's specifically called out repeatedly in the master plan. So if this ultimately ends up being a mixture of, of rental and single-family, you know, I view that as, as consistent with the need of the city and consistent with the master plan. And I would note that further to the master plan, you know, the, the applicant addressed the inclusionary zoning, and that was an additional effort that the, the city made, independent of, or maybe in furtherance of the master plan, you know, again, recognizing that there's both a shortage of housing in the city, but also a shortage of affordable housing. And this is really the first opportunity we've had to see that in practice. And, you know, I think ultimately, you know, that's, that's going to benefit, you know, the residents of the city. And, you know, again, further is the goals that have been expressed by the Board of Aldermen and, you know, through the, the months, many months-long process of the development of the master plan. So, you know, I agree that this, conceptually, and to your point, putting, you know, not getting into the, the specifics, but conceptually, that this, this development is consistent with those goals.
Other comments on the concept of development? Mr. Chairman?
Well put. Very well put.
Anything else? Okay. So having covered that, which is, is very much part of the first few parts of our criteria for evaluation, it does seem like that there are several other pieces that we should think about. I mean, proper setup for stormwater and things like that is, is important in utilities. I feel like that's been addressed. You know, there doesn't appear to be any stormwater-related kind of issues that impact any adjacencies. So at that point, you know, moving forward, the piece that obviously seems to be the most impacted and most concerned of the abutters in the neighborhood is the traffic component. But it seems to me the traffic component is, is not a volume argument so much as an exacerbation of an existing condition, which is a legitimate concern, right? So, I mean, if we have a, essentially, an understood failed condition or near-failed condition, and we're exacerbating it with something, then, you know, that could be a perceived negative impact. So I, I'm interested to hear comments from the board about whether or not, or what's your opinion of the level of exacerbation here, if you believe there is one, on an existing condition that may, you know, do you, do you feel like this is a failed condition that's trying to be exacerbated? Or is this a, I guess I won't put words into it, but tell me what you, what you think.
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you. No, I don't, I don't feel that way. I mean, I, the applicant did do a comprehensive study. They did analysis of speeds and all that stuff, and unfortunately, the residents haven't had an opportunity to review that. But it is a comprehensive study. It was reviewed by senior traffic engineer Wayne Husband. The speeding issue is recognized. It's not uncommon elsewhere in the city. It's, it's, it's unfortunate. It is, you know, whatever condition is occurring there is not being, not occurring because of these 50 homes, you know? It's the people that live there now, or pass by there now. So, you know, will the, will the new residents exasperate that? So, you know, will the new residents exasperate that? There'll be more of them, but that issue exists independent of this development, I guess I would say, because it's prevailing. So certainly, certainly, we should continue to try to find measures to address that condition. But it's not uncommon to see 85th percentile speeds five miles over the posted speed limit. I'd say that's typical. It's also typical to see some outlawing examples of very excessive speed, and that's unfortunate because that is certainly very hazardous. So, yeah, I don't know that it's any, it's that much different than other areas, I guess is my point, and the additional traffic will be potentially more people doing the same thing, but that issue already exists and is not created by this development, so. The, you know, I sympathize with the neighborhood and, you know, if you bought a house and you had a big property behind you with no development on it, you know, having 50 homes go in there, obviously, that's a big change, and I sympathize with them, but to Mr. Barley's point, that's not really, that's not really what we can weigh or not weigh, you know? We have to, we have to look at the conditions in the property and do they satisfy those? The design is extensive. Mr. Madola reviewed that. Drainage is properly dealt with. Sewer is properly dealt with. And whether it's private ownership or association, whatever it is, you know, my only concern is that the infrastructure being private is gonna be maintained and upheld for the benefit of all the residents. So, you know, it's required to submit association documents. That'll be an important piece of this to make sure that, in perpetuity, all those infrastructure pieces are maintained and kept up for the benefit of the neighborhood. But assuming that's done and all the pieces are in place, I don't find any fatal flaws in terms of the design aspects of the project.
Mr. Barley?
Yeah, just to speak a little bit further, the traffic piece, you know, because I would say this is one of the most, you know, common concerns we hear in terms of, you know, particularly with residential developments and something we've addressed with other similar proposals. And, you know, I think, you know, Danny put well in terms of, does it exacerbate some of the issues there? And ultimately, I think, you know, what the applicant has presented is this is an incremental increase in traffic. I mean, you know, we recognize that there's already a lot of traffic coming out of this neighborhood, you know, on, you know, the Timberline East Stuntsable intersection, for example, is a busy intersection. But, you know, based on the traffic study that was presented, the data we have, you know, for example, it's not changing the level of service at that intersection, you know, and as you said, it was reviewed by Wayne Husband, and if, you know, Wayne Husband had said, "I have, you know, these three major concerns," I would feel very differently about, you know, about that traffic report. But that's not what he expressed. He expressed that, you know, he did not have any concerns with the analysis and the numbers that were presented by the traffic engineer. And, you know, as the applicant noted, the calculations that they made in the first instance wouldn't have actually triggered a traffic study. So, you know, we wouldn't have had that data if they hadn't gone to that next step. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that we've got the data, that they went through that effort. But ultimately, as I said, I look at it as it's an incremental increase. So, you know, if there's a problem with speeding, you know, is there the potential that this, that there could be, you know, more people speeding on Timberline Drive because of this? Yes, I suppose that's possible, but it is an existing condition and frankly, not something that's really within the control of the applicant. And, you know, same thing in terms of the traffic volume, which, Mr. Chair, as you said, I don't think was the primary concern that was expressed. But again, I would view it as incremental, and to the extent that there's, you know, issues at East Stuntsable and Timberline Drive, it's not, it's not a problem that's being created by the applicant. So ultimately, I think they've done their diligence, and I think they've, you know, in my view at least, they've satisfied, you know, the standard of this, of this particular plan that's before us, you know, not raising a material traffic issue.
Okay. Ms. Dodson?
Yeah, just further to that point, early on in discussions, you know, we were aware of what the traffic trip generation was estimated to be, and we knew that traffic would be a concern in the neighborhood, so we requested that full study be done. And the results pretty much are what we thought they would be, as we understood intuitively, but we wanted that full documentation provided for the neighborhood, and so I'm glad they've done that. Unfortunately, the neighborhood hasn't gotten to see that, so I would ask staff if there's a way to make that easily or available to the neighborhood. Maybe that can be posted on our website or something to that effect to make it easier for them to find that and review that. I thought they had another point, but I forgot. Oh, I just wanna speak, there was some discussion about the W L center line and the fact that Public Works didn't support that. I mean, that is something that we would consider, but where we've tried to implement that previously for traffic calming reasons, the feedback of the neighborhood was negative. They didn't want their neighborhood street to feel like a main, you know, artery, basically, with a W L and both side white lines. But if that was something, you know, that the neighborhood really did want in this case, that's something that Public Works would consider. I just, providing all that paint and sometimes high-level signs and whatever, it kinda changes the character area, and, you know, sometimes we get feedback that that's not desired, so. Extending the turn lane at East Stuntsable wouldn't hurt. There are some utilities there, so I'm not sure what can be done within what width is there. There's some pretty significant utilities that would be difficult to relocate, but perhaps it could be extended a little bit, which is just some paint, that would probably be a good idea. I think those are the main things I wanted to just touch on.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd ask a question, I mean, being that you obviously have expertise in the road design, and maybe Mr. Ballinger has some input here, too. I mean, are there any off-site improvements that you're aware of that could mitigate? What appears to be mostly a speeding issue. I mean, that seems to be the, I mean, I heard speeding 20 times. So that definitely seems to be, you know, and I feel like that's a legitimate concern. It's, you know, if there is something this board can do, I mean, we're not traffic cops, and that is not our role by any stretch. But if there, you know, if we're overlooking a potential improvement that could help that situation, I would, you know, I wouldn't want that to be the case, so. So, you know, I mean, is further study gonna be able to develop anything like that, or are we literally, you know, is this a position of just, it's a lot of straight road going downhill, and about the only way you're gonna fix that is, you know, park a police car out there, you know, 24/7? And obviously, that's not the role of the planning board by any stretch, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult issue and one that we see all over the city. I mean, lots of times, we get requests to add stop signs. The manual on uniform traffic control devices specifically states that you don't use stop signs for speeding issues. This is not, that's not the appropriate use of them. They're there to basically meter and reinforce the proper traffic yielding condition. So we get lots of requests for stop signs, and lots of times, we can't support them for the reasons that Mr. Plore noted tonight. Other things, you know, typically narrowing widths helps, so I don't disagree, I don't disagree that striping a center line might help. Clearly, that would have to be further looked at because of the trade-off if people are walking in the street regularly in a shoulder, and you have to sacrifice some of that because you put a center line in, you gotta provide, you know, sufficient two-way traffic. You know, there's a trade-off there, so that would need to be further evaluated if we're gonna go that way. And then beyond that, it's hard to do, you know, with new designs, you can try to add some curvature linearness to the roadway. Sometimes that's tried to be done on a retrofit basis, but usually more in a more urbanized area, I suppose, trying to make some geometry changes. And it'd be hard to do here with driveways and currently built conditions, so.
I mean, I know, like, Led Street has speed tables, you know, I mean, is it not functional in this arrangement?
Yeah, they're just very difficult in this environment with the maintenance that we require, you know, plowing and that sort of thing. It's just, doesn't work well in New England. I mean, we do see those other places. We do have a couple places where we have those in the city, but as a general practice, we really don't, we prefer not to have those for maintenance reasons.
Other comments by the board? Have any other comment areas that anybody wanted to, I'm looking at the list of people's concerns. The school impact study, staff, anything?
They would be subject to.
They would be subject to school impact fees. So that's a standard that would be dealt with.
I just wanna know, if these are gonna be private roads, there will not be municipal trash pickup? So I just wanna make that noted. That's a question that often comes up. We don't pick up, we don't pick up trash on private streets.
Yeah. Yeah, they would have to have their own service.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Does, I guess I'll leave it up to the board. Does anybody on the board feel like they don't have enough information to make a decision at this point? I don't have any. Okay. Not hearing any? Now, up there, if you wanna make a motion. Can I remind anybody, there is a new staff report that was passed out.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would make a motion, and that motion would be to approve new business A 22-0038 Conservation Subdivision Plan. And that motion would be with the determination that the plan meets the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-130H for the reasons that we've just discussed at length. And that motion would include a total of 16 stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request from Section 190-282B9 with respect to an existing conditions plan. That read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second is a waiver request of Section 190-279B with respect to certain drafting standards, specifically, as Mr. Brandon discussed, the 100-foot versus 50-foot scale. That will be read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and then stipulations three through 16 as written in the staff report.
Okay. So as I motioned by Mr. Barley, approved, and the 16 stipulations is stated. Do you have a second? Can you further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, folks. If, yeah, if you wanna have discussions, make sure you're outside the doorway there. All right, it's, uh...
Yep, it's nothing but a go. But old boys' club, you gentlemen had a chance to make a difference, and you didn't. Nice, nice job. Good to keep going.
Okay. It's 11:05. I'm gonna talk to the board here for a second. We have two applications in front of us. One's the extension, one's a facade change. Do you wanna power through here, or what do you think? Do we still have the people?
Do we even have anybody here?
Do you wanna shut the door, Scott? Shut the door. Yeah, let's shut the door, thank you.
I don't, is there someone here?
Do we have the applicants for the other cases here?
Unless it's Chad.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm the, this is Lydia Serebowski, the applicant for the Citizens Bank facade.
Okay, just hang on a second. Okay. If we, we have the applicant for A 22-0083?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and move to new business site plan. This is site plan A 22-0083. If you could please close that door over there. Thanks. Okay. This is Reno Investments LLC owner. It's an application and acceptance of proposed one-year extension from previously approved site plan NR 2231 for construction of single, oh, excuse me, of four single-family homes along with one existing one. This property is located at 711 West Hollis Street. So I'd like to go to the board here. Is anybody had a chance to take a look at this site plan? I wanna make a motion as to whether it's ready for jurisdiction. Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that A 22-083 is ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So we have jurisdiction. Do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this? And just a reminder, a summary of the application is fine, understanding that several of us have, were on the board for the original, so.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Bill Reno, current owner of 711 West Hollis Street.
Could you speak a little louder, please? Thanks.
No, I'm sorry. Let me, let me in. So Bill Reno, current owner of 711 West Hollis Street, asking for a one-year extension. The current state of the project is we're working with the building department right now to obtain a building permits. I gathered a little bit of information for them. Our site contract of metal excavation, I believe, was in front of the W board to obtain a drain layers license. You know, buyer and all that should be gone through within the next week or two. If the board grants us that extension, we hope to be onsite within, up to the year prior to the project.
Okay. All right. So hearing that summary, I will open it up to the board for this one-year extension. Does anybody have any questions in the applicant? Does not appear so. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? Hearing none, I'll ask anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan. All right. Hearing none, I'll give the board one more opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Ms. Dodson.
Can you just refresh my memory? This is gonna be a private road, correct?
Correct.
So just again, for the record, there'll be no municipal trash pickup on this private road?
Yes, correct.
Got it. Okay. So hearing no, can you go further questions by the board? Yeah, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Moving the meeting, pretty simple extension, seems pretty reasonable to me, seems like the applicant's... the applicant's getting ready to go. I note that the staff findings are, their stipulation incorporates all prior conditions, so. Does anybody want to make a motion on that? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I would make a motion to approve new business project A 22-0083 site plan for a one-year extension with the finding that that extension request does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO Section 190-146D. And that includes one stipulation, which is that all prior conditions of approval are incorporated.
Okay, so we have that motion approved by Mr. Barley with the stipulations indicated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Next up on the agenda, last item here for new business is site plan A 22-0055. This is Delta MV LLC, Citizens Bank owner, Helyer Lewis and Smith applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed facade change to add EFS where existing approved materials are now in place. This property is at 277 Daniel Webster Highway. Do we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present this?
Yes, Olivia Servassio with Helyer Lewis Smith. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, we just have to turn that on.
Okay.
Okay, try.
Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Okay, so our project is located at 277 Daniel Webster Highway. This is the existing conditions, it's the Citizens Bank, it's a very high-profile location, so the client is wanting to bring the building up to the latest branding standards. So the next couple of slides, I'm going to show the proposed elevations and materiality. So as part of the new branding initiatives, we're proposing this wood portal over the entry to highlight the building entry, and as you mentioned, we're proposing EFS as the material to cover the existing tile for a more neutral and modern color palette. And it was suggested by the staff to bring in more natural elements, both for aesthetic and practical reasons, for like snow shoveling, things like that. So we've added a two-foot base of like a stone veneer all around the building. So I have some massing photos before and after showing the existing conditions and then our proposed facade changes.
Okay.
So for materiality, we're proposing EFS for the top and bottom band, if you will, to be painted in light pewter and green belt, those are the branding colors. Composite plank material for the wood portal. The metal fascia that would go around the drive-through area would also be that green belt green, and then the stone veneer base part of the new standard. And then this bank is also located within a shopping center. This, this photo right here showing the majority, or the primary building material, facade material, is this neutral tone EFS with a masonry material at the base. So we're proposing something similar to keep in with the surrounding context. Similarly, a couple of properties just down the street have similar looks with that stone base and neutral EFS paneling. And then finally, I have some precedent images of, this is a shell building under construction, also a Citizens Bank. You can see the EFS paneling and the stone band. And then here, they have the wood portal. This is more of a double-height space, but same, same concept to highlight the entry with that wood portal.
Okay.
Any questions?
None for me. Any, anybody on the board have any questions with the applicant? The staff has gone through all of these with the applicant, going. Okay. So, yeah, I, I don't have any. Anybody, so I guess if there's no questions by the board, I'll just make sure, if there's nobody here in the audience here, but there may be online, anybody online? Wishing to speak in opposition, concern, or favor, I would say. Okay? Nobody? All right, hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing then and move on to the meeting. Seems like a pretty simple request, pretty common for this area and this type of building. So, anybody have any discussion items or somebody ready to make a motion?
I'm sorry?
Uh, sorry.
Or you're just a little low on my end?
Yeah, I'm just talking with the board, that's okay. Anybody want to make a motion on this? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve our new business case A 22-0055, finding that it does meet the requirements of site plan NRO 190-146D, subject to five conditions. Condition number one, with respect to a waiver of Section 190-172D, two, three, and four, with respect to materials and requirements, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, waiver request of NRO Section 190-279B with respect to existing conditions plans, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent. Stipulations three through five as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve from Mr. Ballinger with the stipulations as stated. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have a review of our tentative agenda. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that and want to make a motion as to whether there are any items on the tentative agenda that have a regional impact? One, two, three, four, five new ones on there? Page 115 on that.
Where's one Redmond Street?
One, what's the one?
Redmond Street?
Redmond Street? Do you know who that is, Scott?
Yeah, Redmond Street is, uh, right, uh, it's near the cemetery.
Yeah, okay, so. Okay, so it's near the cemetery off exit five. Got it? Yeah, okay, over by the school. Yeah, FWW, got it.
All right, so with, with that one, minor clarification, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that having reviewed the technical review minutes, there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Barley that there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Okay, and then other business number two, I think Matt, you just want to say something? This is, needs to get moved down the road?
I would, thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is a long night for the board. The applicant did request to table this item to the June 2 planning board meeting agenda based on some legal guidance that they received very late in the day from the city, so we certainly take responsibility for that, but they were amenable to moving the agenda items to the June 2 agenda. I would like to request respectfully that the board actually make a motion to table this, just to ensure that we do not need to provide new notification to the abutters nor to the public. But other than that, that's my simple request for the board this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, does the board have any questions for Matt or anybody on this? So we'd be looking for a motion for tabling, or continuance, I guess, to June 2 meeting? Does anybody want to make that motion?
Sure, and Mr. Chair, for clarification, if it would be, it's, it's not a normal case, like you don't accept jurisdiction over a...
Yeah, I think it'd just be a continuance.
Okay. Certainly. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
To continue, other business item, number two, property located at 591 West Hollis Street, continue that to the June 2, 2022 planning board meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion to continue this, the business number two, to June 2. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. Okay. Any further discussion items anybody have? I have none at this point on night, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, so a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hudson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Meeting is adjourned 11:21. Thank you, everybody.